I call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order at 6:32. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My evacuation announcement, in case an alarm should sound, we have to evacuate this room. There are two exits, one to my left. If you go out this door, take an immediate left, go straight down the hall, right out to the double doors into the parking lot. You go out the exit to my right, just take an immediate right turn, go straight to the corridor, take an immediate left turn, go straight down the corridor to the double doors, and right out to the left. Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Genitis, Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mrs. Suzak?
Here.
Mr. Feely?
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mrs. Rancourt?
Here.
Chairman Neville?
Here.
I believe we have a board guest. We have Chief Charles Barazza here. Dr. Gallagher, if you want to introduce the issue.
I think everyone knows the chief. I'll just introduce them, and what I'm going to do is switch chairs. Why don't you sit here, and I'll just sit right over there.
Okay.
And then also, I apologize, I know this was not in your packet on Friday, since we didn't send out a packet, but this is the typical write-up that we do pertaining to action items. You can have that there.
The chief had asked us a couple of weeks ago to put this on the agenda, give him an opportunity to speak to the board about a particular issue that has come up, I think, in practice, and he wanted to explain to us and ask us to consider endorsing his comments here. Go ahead, Carl.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight. What we have to talk about tonight is really a pretty simple thing, but what it pertains to is Connecticut General Statute 53A-217-B. The statute talks about making it illegal to possess firearms and dangerous weapons on school property, which obviously makes sense. The statute then goes on to say this statute doesn't apply to certain situations. One of them is it doesn't apply to police officers while engaged in their official capacity. So obviously during the day, if there's a call, the officers go, they have their firearms on issue. Where the issue could come up, and it hasn't happened, I'm just looking at this kind of proactively, is that we have officers, not only from Enfield, but other towns that live here in Enfield. They may attend a Fermi football game, they may have to meet with a teacher, a teacher-parent conference, the officers may be armed, and according to the statute, they went out of their way to say that the exemption only applies for officers while engaging their official duties. So if I go to watch my daughter play basketball at the Fermi High Gym, I'm not there in my official capacity yet, never know when something could happen, and under the statute as it's written, we're not supposed to have firearms. There's a provision in the statute that says that if the local Board of Education wants to waive that and allow the police officers to have firearms even off-duty, even when it's not related, you know, they're just there for any multitude of reasons, then it would be permissible. So what I'm here tonight is to see if the board would grant us that authority, that when our officers, not just our officers, it's any sworn police officer enters the school property, they can be armed whether they're, when they're off-duty. That's basically it. I've contacted our state rep, Kathy Talarida, and they're looking at this on the state level to correct it for all the towns, but who knows when that's going to happen, if it's going to happen. So what I'm trying to do is address the issue here in the town of Enfield.
Could you just define the sworn officer? We just had that little conversation before the meeting.
Right, right. A sworn officer is one that has the authority to make arrests under the Connecticut statutes. It wouldn't apply to any auxiliary officers, police explorers, anything like that. It's people that are municipal police officers or Connecticut State Police Officers. There are some other provisions. It could be certain parole officers that are empowered to make arrests, but it's really limited to people that are certified as sworn officers.
And as you're explaining to me, people could be coming, we have a number of police officers in town that have youngsters in school, but we also have police officers out of town.
Right.
That come in, they may come off their shift and come in.
Right.
In plain clothes just to pick up their kid or.
Pick up their kid or talk to the teacher about something, and they're armed. And technically, the way it's written, they're not, you know, without this provision that you grant us, they're not supposed to be doing that. We could potentially have a problem. This would avoid that.
Any questions?
Just a simple question. If this would not pertain to anybody who has a blue card or anything like that, it would just be.
No, it's sworn police officers, period.
Just be the police officers.
Right. It wouldn't apply to people that have pistol permits or anything like that, just sworn police officers.
Any other questions? Joyce?
Do you feel it would be necessary to include the police officers from other towns?
Only because I know that we have police officers that live in Enfield that are, they work in other towns, but their children, their children go to the public schools here in town. So even though an officer may work for the state police, he may have a need to go to Fermi to speak to the teacher, and they're armed. So yeah, I would include sworn police officers, not just Enfield police officers.
But those that you're referring to actually have a connection to Enfield?
They have, yeah.
It's not like simply someone from Summers, a policeman from Summers, coming to town to go to a football game?
It could be that, too. It could be a police officer from anywhere that wants to come to see Fermi play a football game, he goes to the game. He would be included under this umbrella if he's a sworn officer.
He may be from the other team, he may be coming in just to see the team play or something like that.
Right, exactly.
Carl, my experience, and it's limited, but most of the police officers I know do carry a.
That's correct.
Weapon when they're in plain clothes when they're off-duty.
Right, and I think if you looked at this just, you know, practically, and hopefully we'd never have this happen, but if we were at an event, a football game, a basketball game, just as an observer, either our children are playing, or we like sports, whatever, and something occurred, the expectation on my part is that my officers would act.
Right.
And depending on what they encounter, we don't want to disarm them, if that's my feeling.
Correct.
Just one more question. This would also include officers in case there was a situation where a mutual aid situation became necessary.
If it's anything to do with what an official police action.
You can do it anyway, right?
This doesn't count. We're already coming for that. This is just purely off-duty, not in the artificial capacity.
Anybody have any other questions here? Yes, Joyce?
Here's a comment. I'm not comfortable with making it a blanket statement for any policeman anywhere, because we've heard situations where policemen go walkers and use their guns inappropriately. Not that I would expect anything like that to happen with an Enfield policeman, but any policeman coming into town is something different.
Just from my own experience, again, I think, we've had lots of parents, we have lots of parents in and out of town whose parents are police officers, and they're in and out of the building, and frankly, if I call down and say, "Your kid's sick." Okay, they're coming in to get the kid, okay, as they should.
Right.
And I don't know whether they're armed or not, nor do I need to ask, but I guess I subscribe to the chief's theory that if something were to happen in this day and age, I'd rather have folks be there who can act to protect our kids and the public. And I'm comfortable with that. I understand what you're saying, Joyce, but I think, given what we have here, I'm very, very comfortable with what they're requesting. These are not, these aren't people who haven't been trained, these are not people who are not empowered, they can carry that gun, they have a carry permit anyway, anywhere in the state of Connecticut, I believe, right?
Correct.
So they can do, they're in the stores when you're there. They're, and the only, the only other thing we're doing is legalizing what actually goes on, and I think the chief is just making it clear, and he wants us to be above board, basically, and say, "This is what's going on here."
There's nothing that prompted this. As I read the statute, you know, you look at things, laws change, and I don't know if the legislature's intent, when they instructed this statute, was to exclude off-duty officers. I'd have a hard time believing that, but that's what it says. So they're looking at it up in Hartford right now, but this tonight authorization would just clarify it for us here at Enfield, and that's what we're concerned about.
Any other questions? Yes, Donna?
What actually happens now, prior to this?
What happens now? I can't honestly say. I mean, if officers go to a football game or something, they're probably armed, and by the letter of the law, they probably shouldn't be.
But this would be like a plainclothes officer is more what we're.
They're just in plain clothes.
This is what I'm trying to get a handle on.
Well, I know a police officer from another town, lives in town, and he is, basically, he's told that he has to carry a gun 24 hours a day, and it would not be uncommon for him to come into a school situation. Now, as I understand it, technically anyway, that's a Class D felony.
Right. I mean, you know, if officers are off-duty, they don't normally wear their police uniform, so they would be just wearing normal clothes.
Right, and it would be more of a concealed weapon.
Yes, oh, yes.
We would be seeing a uniformed police officer come in for, you know, your conference with a teacher, fully armed.
No, I don't, no, usually when work's over, they change. But I think what we're doing is legitimizing what actually goes on. We don't ask people, my assumption always is that a police officer is armed. That's my assumption, having worked with so many over the last 40 years. And I personally have no problem with that, but I think the chief wanted to bring it here because the exception in the law is to have the school board make that exception.
And they put it in there, so I thought if we could get that passed here, then whatever happens on the state level wouldn't matter, so. And I reemphasize again, these are all people that have been screened, gone through all the police academy, psychological testing, and the state allows them to carry anywhere in the state now anyways, so it's not, you know, anything that would be broadened to include other folks. It's sworn, post-academy certified officers only.
I have more of a problem with people who have weapons that aren't police officers than I do with people who are trained and sworn to uphold the law and so on. And the world is crazy, but if something went wrong in the schools, I'd rather have our police officers be there and can act to prevent something from happening. That's, you know, if it's from a practitioner, that's.
I would hate to see a police officer jammed up on the technicality on something like that, him protecting himself while he's off-duty. Like, again, if he can help us out, if a situation does happen, and he's off-duty, he's in the school, I mean, he shouldn't cover to do that and jamming him up like that, so I could see why.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
At this point, I entertain a motion, I'm looking for my motion, I entertain a motion to authorize sworn police officers to carry firearms on school property. Somebody want to make that motion?
Can we make a motion with school property, buildings, grounds covered? Would make, or just.
No, would that, would that cover it anyway? We just said school property, that wouldn't be building.
I think what you have in front of you would be to take action to prove the possession of firearms on school property, buildings, and grounds with all sworn police officers while off-duty in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, the chief mentioned.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mrs. Suzak?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rancourt?
Yes.
Chairman Neville?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. I guess we're moving on with our budget discussion for 2012-13, continuing that from our past couple of meetings. Correct me if I'm wrong, we left our last meeting, we were talking about a goal, we were talking about, we spoke to Mr. Russell about the recommendations that Dr. Gallagher had put in, and the numbers, and I think dollar amounts came from Mr. Russell, and we had a pretty thorough discussion on that. And I think we raised the question, not whether we needed to have a refresh of this stuff, but what that refresh should look like. And, correct me if I'm wrong, my recollection is that Mr. Russell said we could go either way with it, we could do the laptops, or do things as recommended, or we could look at a combination of things. And we asked him some questions, I think Dr. Gallagher asked him several others in terms of how it would lay out, in terms of would you have to have new servers, or do you have to have additional staff, and so we tried to find out the exact cost of that. And I think what we wanted to do was bring some closure to that discussion as to what we wanted to do. I believe, Mrs. Hall, you were talking about, that we should sketch out, if we wanted to do a pilot, we should sketch that out pretty soon, so that we could get some information by the time we have to make a decision, which would be hopefully in May.
Could we not make any significant changes in opposing and have that included in our budget, yet go into an in-depth discussion of a technology plan between now and the time we actually are finalizing our budget after an allocation is made? That would mean that we'd have to work in whatever specifications we've already talked about, but within that particular amount of money, we could make any changes that would fit our plan, as opposed to making an instant decision on what it should look like now. Is that doable?
It is in my mind, okay, but I think what we're trying to do is get, we talked about, what we talked about was not making a snap decision, we all recognize the need to do something, okay? We, I've been yelling for years about refreshing the technology, and Mr. Russell came through and put in a recommendation for it. The question is, given the changes in technology, what will we want to come up with so that our teachers are, have as close to the latest technology as they possibly can, so that our students can learn? And it's more, to me, not an issue of getting technology, it's getting the right technology so we can improve instruction. That's what it's about, Donna.
So what you're saying is you want to set a budget amount, but not allocate to what you're going to do with it?
Yes, okay. And I think what I heard Mr. Russell say is that it could go either way. It would be, you know, pretty much the same amount of money, depending, you know, whether we went with.
But as you're asking, how much money do you think is reasonable in a $60 million budget? Should be technology every year.
I don't think that's a question.
That could be a different answer.
That's a different question.
That's what I'm hearing.
Well, I think what we want to do is find out, find out what will work, what will meet everybody's needs, both the kids and the students, and then what will it cost? I don't think it's a question for any of us, that we need to do some kind of refresh. We have some computers at the end of their useful life, and we can't go, we can't go on with that. But I think we raised a number of questions the last time, and Mr. Russell said that we could explore that, and the cost would be essentially the same. That's what he said. I'd like to see the numbers, and I think Joyce is correct, that we can play that out over the next month or two and get the answers to those questions, but leave the item in the budget the same until we work that out, how we can.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We're going to put a dollar amount in, and now we'll allocate how we spend it once we've made decisions with the existing people.
And our intent is.
And our.
Correct. Charlie?
I just, I'm rather hesitant to agree to that, because what we're doing is we're coming up with a number without really looking at where we're going to be spending the money.
Not really.
Oh, I think we're spending the money on the areas that they said.
Yeah.
It's a question of whether it's going to be exactly as stated there, or it's going to be some new device, be it a different kind of laptop, or iPad, or what, or some combination of any of them. Okay, it's not a matter of whether we need those things, I think it's a matter of what those things would ultimately do. The question was, we're buying, we're buying, what's in there is older technology, and we're saying, is there something else, given the change that's going on, that would be more cost-effective?
So then what we are talking about is what Donna went and suggested earlier, where we are coming up with a budget for technology, and that's where, and that's what would be added to our current budget?
That could be the same, the exact same thing that's in the superintendent's budget. The exact same without there.
We're just saying, are we comfortable with approximately about $400,000, $4,000 in budget?
300.
$4,000.
It was 350 that was going towards the.
But there's two extra salaries and benefits and services programs.
So approximately $400,000 is what it looks like. And because the leases are open until the end of June, we have that amount of time to make the decision as to whether extend the leases or use what would have been spent on the leases for some other project or purpose, and determine whether we want to keep the laptops we already have, or do away with them and replace them with something else.
Which is the most cost-effective, I mean, that's, it's a lot of money, and I think if we're going to do it, we should do diligence to find out what's the best way to go with this, particularly in the sense that the commitment that's there is a three-year commitment.
Right.
Okay, and I think.
$400,000 almost every year.
Yeah, and I think if we're going to do that, then let's do some more research between now and then, and we'll have answers and dollars to go with it.
In the meantime, I think we should talk about a pilot that we might want to, you know, expose as an initiative to start our thinking, that, you know, getting teachers involved with using the technology, whether it's a laptop or a tablet, in a particular way relative to classrooms. And I'm not, I just don't know what's going on with technology in our schools at the moment. I took a week survey today, and thank goodness it wasn't in-depth about what our schools do, but it did indicate, ask whether we have a one-on-one, one-to-one correlation with our equipment with students. And after I checked all of the technology that I personally own, and then could not say that we're doing anything close to that with schools, it was a little doubter. But I don't know. Is more going on in the schools than I'm aware of? Now that teachers all have a laptop, for example, is, that was looked upon as being a very strong positive. Is it? Was it? Is it still?
Good questions.
But I don't have any answers. Does anybody? No.
If you're talking about the teachers with the laptops, I think the middle school and up, they're all doing the hack and tack at a minimum, so you know that's happening, that's going to roll out to the elementary next year, so.
But is it, is it just going into Fermi now?
No, no.
Lots of.
I was under the impression that on the 7th, you were going to go to the middle school, and I know Mr.
Van Tassel.
Not Van Tassel, Mr. Russell is working on the answers to your questions, he's planning to be there, so I think a lot of you could have that. I want to speak to two other terms you've thrown out here as the pilot. Anything you're planning to pilot, you need to be planning to pilot that in September. And I know I've talked to Mrs. Kavanaugh, and what Mrs. Kavanaugh is telling me is that their intention in this, for this spring, they've budgeted for this, they've approved new math books for certain grades and certain courses for next year. And she's saying the intention was to order them now, get them ready, set them the first day of school, they're handed out to the students, and they're using them. More than likely, if you were looking to do a pilot, that would be the pilot. When we left here a week ago, or two weeks ago, I thought you guys were going to tell me your pilot was you all doing the.
We just assumed you were going to get those for us.
No, no, I won't get any for you unless you do a board action to do it. Then I really would like to just get them for you. Tony and I know about Facebook, right? We don't go anywhere near Facebook. In fact, I saw that I got arrested in Target tonight messing around with the iPads. So, no, don't say that. You're looking for them, don't say it was you.
Charles, we can do that.
Please take a search.
I'm sending you a fun question.
But I was under the impression that was what you were talking about, but right now, with the way it is going, like, when I talked to Linda Kavanaugh, that was her recommendation, to pick out a couple of the math classes, obviously you're not going to do all the math classes a pilot, decide which ones you want to pilot, and then at that point, you can institute a pilot. And the other word that I want to talk to her, the other term is, is the technology plan. Right now, you're under a three-year technology plan that's required by the state, I think it's E D 656 or 661 or something. Basically, that thing is what you're using for your E rate. This thing, some of you were on the committee, I know you're not, you had, you were on the committee, I think Chuck was on the committee, three years ago on this, and it had to go into correct, correct signs off on it, they send it into the state and they do that. We need to get that done for the end of March, so people are starting to work up on that and get it up to speed, but we try to make that very generic, so that you're not committing to something that's so specific that if you don't have the funding, or you don't have it, you would go from there. So my advice would be wait till the 7th, get your questions down about technology, if you can get them to me ahead of time, I can feed them to Mr. Russell. And the other people we could bring to that meeting are the tech teachers, we could have Guy Barasso there, we could have some of the teachers who are actually teaching it, and I think they could answer much better than Tony or I could what's being done in the classrooms, and fill in on where you are with technology in some of the grades in some of the schools.
I hear what you're saying, I think we have so many opportunities to have these discussions, and I think we've all been talking about it back and forth since we talked two years ago.
Well, I'd like to mention the first part, because the way Donna started out, I thought we were on a roll here. That's what the board did last year. I said, what the board did last year, we presented the superintendent's budget, they said they knew they were not going to adopt, they wanted to adopt the amount, they agreed on the amount, and they said, "We know we have time to decide exactly where we're spending our dollars," and that's what I hear you saying. You're planning to agree on an amount, and then sometime between now and whenever, after you get the actual amount, you're deciding what you want to buy.
But we want to do that by going through and finding out some information about what we want to buy.
Well, obviously.
Okay, and I think part of that is having a discussion here. We could also, I mean, one, you mentioned that these folks using those things. I think the best way to find out whether you're going, it's going to be useful to you, even though what it does, is to try it out. I mean, I've been using it since it came out. I know Mr. Barasso has, and I know a number, I think Joyce, you just bawled one, didn't you? Okay, separate people have them out there. Why don't we put together a pilot, at least get these folks to do what the town council's doing, and be role models for others? The second piece, and I think we can do it, John, is a pilot of the teacher part of it, okay? Because one of the questions that came up at the last meeting is that we could either buy those computers and just hold it off a year, and I think it was 115,000, it was 90 bucks a piece, or whatever it was. And the second thing, the first thing that was mentioned was to go into a lease for three years, okay? And I think we've got a lot of questions, and we're reluctant to spend, to commit for three years on something that we don't know the answers to. A suggestion would be grab the teachers, grab two at each, each of the levels there, okay? You could even use the tech teachers at the elementary level, because I don't know how you.
That's what I would bring in.
Okay, I'd bring two department chairs, and each of the, the other folks get, put together a detailed pilot of the things that teachers use laptops for and computers for right now, and assess whether they can do that with these particular devices. We've already established the issues with the town council on how you download this stuff, we have a common plan with Apple so that they can download the apps and do it, and they've worked those things out, we've got, I think they've got group purchasing for the apps, so that we don't pay the full amounts for those things, and we get a license for them, and it's not very expensive at all. And put that together, and have them report back to us in, say, April. It won't take that long to figure it out. We've already figured it out that it does work with e-school.
I think that's an awful aggressive, you get your C A P T, and your C M Ts coming up in March, and to say you want something back in April, tomorrow's February 1. I don't know.
These, I think.
That's what I'm saying, I really don't want to sit here and commit to a pilot that's going to involve staff without having staff talk to a little bit about.
Well, I think we can ask the staff that, but.
You can't.
I think the early adopters are always willing to take on those things. If it's going to give them a better tool to use, that they can use in their classroom. And the things I'm talking about, being able to use it to teach lessons, to, not only print for it, but also be able to project up on the screen, you know, we talked about some of these.
Well, you know what I'd ask you to do, I guess, was, no, is why don't you write out what you think, you envision this to be, and we can roll that out to the teachers and see if there's interest in it, and we can roll out the price to find out what we're talking about.
Sure.
When you say it, you know, I hear you saying two teachers, but at the same time, are we talking just two teachers, or are we talking two teachers per building, two teachers per grade?
I said per level, John, okay, and I would.
So per level would be.
I'm talking, you know.
Two in Fermi and two in.
Yeah, so you're going to, you're going to end up with probably a 10 or a dozen people So you're going to, you're going to end up with probably a 10 or a dozen people that would be involved, that would cover all the levels.
That's what I'm saying. When you say that, I didn't really understand what you were saying.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Yes, Joyce?
On the other hand, if there is to be a new algebra textbook being adopted, and it goes through a very rigorous process before we decide what it should be, we should check to see if it's available on ebook, as an ebook. And then you're talking about potential for a class-
True.
-using equipment, and using ebooks as a one-on-one type of thing, which is potentially-
And that's true of September. That's what she was saying. You wait till September, they can, they can do that in September.
There was in September.
What you just said. You'd like to take the text on an ebook.
You're talking about curriculum and math books that have been chosen and getting the ebook that goes with that. Put them on. But-
Well, are we talking about an alpha test or a beta test?
Don't we have to make a decision before September?
An alpha test.
Well, you have to make a decision before September, but you're not making a decision tonight. You've got time to make your decision.
What's your definition?
We're not really making any decisions tonight. Chuck's going to explain me the difference between alpha and beta.
Go ahead. Well, it's basically the size of the, who gets these things. If we're talking about getting-
A small amount.
Yeah. If we're talking about eight, 10 machines, that's one thing. If we're talking about putting them into a particular building for a particular class, that's a much broader base. You're actually having the kids use these things as opposed to a couple of people using them.
You'd have to do both at some point.
Right. Well, you build, you build up to it.
You build up to it. I'm just saying, before you buy 550 or anything, or 625 or anything, we should, we should make sure that it meets our needs.
Right.
Okay? And that's why I'm suggesting-
Right. So we start off with like 10, and then we go to 30 for a test of-
Once we see how effective it is.
A classroom situation, see if it works, and then build off with that. You know, then if it works in the, in the one classroom, get it for the entire class, you know, the entire grade, so that everybody can be using it. And then if that works, then you go out and build on, you just keep on building on.
In my mind, it's a phased-in thing as you see your results from your study.
Right. Because, and at any point, if it doesn't work, you can stop with a, with a limited amount of exposure.
At this point, can't we also find evidence of where it is being used elsewhere?
That would be part of it.
That wouldn't work? You know, they're, they're telling us it works because they've been using it for years. There are many high schools in this state, well, actually, the school system, which uses a great deal more technology than we do, including Facebook and Twitter, as a school function. But, you know, we're here, that, we can find all kinds of-
Are we talking about the tablets, or, I mean, that technology hasn't been out for years?
No, no. I think we're talking about, you're looking at different devices that can be used in this. And as we carry out, as we spend these monies, we want to make sure that we're buying as close to the latest technology, gives us as much flexibility as we move on. We don't want to hamstring ourselves, okay, for the next three years by buying something that's literally older technology. Okay? Because we can't change. And I think if we give ourselves some breathing room, we can maybe try out some of the new technologies that are out there that could have some economies of scale and could also have some-
Well, that's why you do want, you want to start out with a relatively small, because, you know, the first 10 people that are using this will have these, will have this equipment for the next three or four years. And we probably won't be replacing that equipment with the newer stuff that somebody else is going to be getting in two years.
But we need to gather some data-
Right.
-on what will work and what won't. And I was looking at chunking it, one piece for the teachers, because we've looked at that as a chunk in the past. And I was looking at one piece for the curriculum, which we'd look at and see whether those, you say ebooks, I'm looking at the ones that have just been published out there. I know Pearson has done an algebra one, and I don't know, I don't know which one we bought, but I think it'd be worth investigating.
No, we don't yet either.
Okay. I think it'd be worth investigating.
I mean, we're good in committee, just not yet.
It would be worth investing in to see whether that's a possible way to go. I personally think the staff would get excited about the new technology because of the possibilities. And I bet we have more volunteers than you could deal with that would jump in and say, we'll be willing to get involved in this kind of stuff.
And I believe that.
There'll be an enthusiasm out there that we need.
The staff will be all that.
Yep. They're making noise out there. Go ahead, John.
I, last night when I got home, I had emailed Mr. Nell, and I think that I can say something. I'm, I was on board of EPI, which is the educational foundation, and now I'm the liaison, so I kept in the loop. And in the last month, they have had five grant requests for iPads for teachers. So there are five teachers out there that have already requested an iPad just from them. So we already have five people that we know that are interested.
We actually have a lot more, especially if there's a number of them out there that we've been out last year.
I haven't gotten the information yet. They, Shannon was going to the teachers and saying, is it okay, you know, we give them the information? Just because when they have to do a grant application, they have to tell us what they're going to use it for. Are they planning, you know, what are their plans, what is going to be the interaction with children? So I'd like to see, before us even initiating something, what they're thinking.
And it has to be approved by technology before they buy it. That has, that's, everything that they get has to be approved by the curriculum people and by technology.
In fact, the pilots normally go through the curriculum committee. They would come to the curriculum committee and make a proposal on what the pilot is, and the curriculum committee would-
I would think that would be appropriate place to do it. I think we also bring Mr. Barasso in, and bring Mr. Russell in there, and sit down and go through it. I think there's a, there's an enthusiasm that's out there to do this, and I don't think we want to let that go. You're absolutely right that we need to structure it, we need to be careful what we do, we need to be careful not to overreach. Okay? But I think, I think with the amount of money that's out there, I think it behooves us to kind of get some data on this stuff before we make a commitment to purchase it. I think it's going to be close to the same amount of money, because you're getting, you need, you have a big replacement that I need there, yes.
Isn't it possible to reach out to the users? To let the users, the teachers, let us know, you know, what they, you know, Jen had suggested it, what they use, what they would like, how much they use their laptop, how much they use their BYOD, you know? Then we would, to me, I would have a better feel for being able to spend the $400,000, because I know that I'm spending it on something that they're going to want to use, they're excited about.
I think we have to do some due diligence and find out what, whether it will meet our needs before we say that there's a multiple, multiple offers out there in terms of that.
I would just like to see how much the teachers are using, what they have available to them now, and any thoughts they have on, because they're the users. That's, that's just my, that's just an idea to throw out there. I really wouldn't mind hearing from them.
One thing we may want to hear about is, and I think Joyce was saying, other districts are doing this. And I think, at least I heard from vice principal at Newington, that they're using them at the middle school. I don't know if that's true or not yet.
We have some at the middle school. We're using them extensively in the first grade. We have two first-grade teachers who are working with a class set, do some amazing things with them.
And I think Burlington, Connecticut gave all their high schoolers iPad, not positive by any means.
No, there, I agree. We're behind the eight ball when it comes to technology. And I think what we're trying to do is, before we make a decision that'll lock us in for three years, is say, what's possible?
And look at the schools. I'm sure they'll be able to tell us the good and the bad of what, what's worked, what hasn't worked.
Is there any issue with bringing Jeff to the table, just to ask him how they came about their decisions to do that?
Well, that's up to Jeff, I guess, if he feels like it.
You come to Jeff?
Yeah.
Mr. Spence?
One of the things we did last, I'm thinking it was somewhere in early March, we took a team of five of us and went to Apple headquarters in New York. And we spent a day and a half with them down there, and they showed us all the things that could happen when the iPad 2 was just coming out. And we came back and we made a decision to do exactly what you said. We got some for the administrators, we were able to use them for a while. And then we had two first-grade teachers who really wanted to do the pilot set with the classroom, they've been working with it all year long, and they've been kind of working their way through it. Since then, we made a decision to buy another classroom set for the middle school, and we're hopeful that we can buy some more. It has been a learning curve. Sent those people out. They've been kind of involved in some different collaborative networks with other folks who are using. I really don't know who those people are, because I haven't been that close to their actual day-to-day work. But they've been trying to, you know, work collaboratively to figure out what some of the best things for the classrooms are. We've also been using some of them in the special education students on various kinds of one-on-one type things, more as a assistive technology type idea, to help those students organize their things and do some work that would benefit them and make schoolwork easier for them to stay organized with. Those are some of the things that we've done. The other thing that, you know, we wrestle with at all times is the advance of technology. And we were working with iPad 1s first, and then we've got iPad 2s. And my understanding is, by the end of next month, by April 1st, the iPad 3 is going to be available. So as you guys move forward and decide how quickly you want to pilot, you know, to hop on an iPad 2 for the last month of its existence, or do you want to wait for the enhanced iPad 3 that'll be here April 1st? I mean, those are always tough decisions, and especially in this tablet thing, because we're moving so fast now. I mean, everybody's getting them, they're coming out quickly, they're getting more. My understanding, though, is this iPad 3 is going to have pretty much the same horsepower as a pretty good-sized desktop computer. So it's going to be quite powerful.
And that is the major change that they're planning on.
Yeah. It's going to have a lot of, the speed of it's going to be faster, the battery's going to be lighter, and the actual processing capacity of it's going to be equal to pretty much what's sitting on most people's desktops.
With your first graders, did they have an iPad for their own use? Did they take it home?
They do not. It stays in the classroom.
It's only in the classroom?
Yes.
They set them up in like a, almost like a mobile library to, they put them in, so they all charge up and all that stuff.
There are carts, yep. And the carts, from what I understand, and I haven't been that close to the newest stuff from IT, but what they're saying is, they can do group downloads to the whole set of them while they're sitting there. So you don't have to touch every machine, you can actually put the apps on the machines. The bulky thing is still the purchasing of the apps. I mean, basically what you're buying is a gift card, so to speak, with X number of dollars on it, and somebody has to make the decision to go ahead and utilize the dollars on the gift card to be spent on the iPad. That's still a little clunky, and it's okay for a classroom set here and a classroom set there. But to think about a whole school district trying to get on this thing with a, you know, a gigantic gift card of, let's say, $40,000 or $50,000 or $60,000 that you're going to spend on apps over the course of the year, and to not really have that kind of control over that kind of money, is a little bit perplexing. And so Apple's still working on that. The good news is, a year ago, when we went down to see them, we presented them on that problem. We obviously weren't the only people who were told about that. They had no plans to accommodate school districts, but they think they've seen the need to do that.
They're actually dealing with the textbooks, they're giving you, not, they're giving you a card with a license number, you plug in that number, and instead of having an open, like, credit card, you just, you get it that way. You have a number, you have so many licenses, and you just plug in that number, and it downloads right, right through the app account there. So, I mean, and they're changing, they're moving quickly with this stuff. And I think the thing is, whether it's right or wrong, the technology is changing so fast that it's worth exploring.
What is the nature of your classroom technology at high school?
The classrooms are equipped with a teacher workstation, an overhead projector, either a smartboard or a MIMO, in all classrooms at the high school. And then various student computers in the backs of the rooms, anywhere from 3 to 5. And those are, you leave this process of moving computers down in grade, and so the older computers are at the back. The science classrooms have got a couple of sets of laptops on carts that are designed to work with the Pasco software, so they can be rolled into a lab and broken out and used by the students in different lab settings, and packaged back up and moved to the next classroom. There's a world language lab where the students can go and study world language, but it's a separate lab from the world language classes.
Is that with desktops?
Those are desktops there, yeah.
So you have a mixture of things depending on how you use, right? What the need is.
Yeah. Primarily, it's desktop. The only laptops availability is on the carts in the science area.
How did you deal with it in terms of the teachers and the parents and bringing, bringing up this new technology?
I'm not really following the question, you know, we never had any pushback. I mean, obviously, the more things you can give to the kids and expose them to, that's always been supportive. No one's really, I think, the question, I think if anything, we were kind of the same way you are. People wanted to know why our kids didn't have this, that, and the other thing, and it was just a matter of prioritizing what we were able to get for them.
Can kids or staff bring in their own, what did John call them?
BYOD.
BYOD?
BYOD, yeah. We have, you know, that's an interesting decision that we made this year to allow the students in Newington High School to, you know, instead of fighting the battle of, you know, where have you hidden your iPhone? We are allowing them to use them. We have been able to open up the connectivity to our wireless network for internet access only. So there's a, there's a block between our network files, and if you have your own personal device, you can't get there. If you're on a school-wide device, a school-wide issued device, which has been certified by the IT department, and we know that it's clean, then those through the wireless go through a different portal, and they can get to the network files and things like that. But we are allowing students to bring those devices in at the decision solely of the teacher. They can be used in class, if the teacher says, take out your device and look this up and check that out. If the teacher wants to go with it, that's okay. In the common areas, they are allowed to use those things. And during passing time, they're allowed to use them. We've had to have a little bit of discussion with the student body about safety, walking up and down halls, you know, looking at this. I will tell you that the school is much quieter. As I walk through the school during passing time, it used to be very loud and chaotic. It's much, much quieter. I think, you know, they could text their friend standing over there by the camera, as opposed to yelling across the hall to them. So that's kind of interesting. We really haven't had a whole lot of problems with it. The kids have, you know, they've talked, the high school administration, assistant principals have talked to the kids at length about their responsibility to be using this correctly and using it the way they're supposed to use it, not having it out during class unless they're told to. And the kids have been pretty good. They've realized that they've been treated like adults, and they've handled it pretty well so far.
That's the high school level, or is that other level?
That's just the high school level right now.
How about teacher development? Do they want to bring their own laptop in or their own?
Again, they can bring them in, they cannot connect to the network directly. Now, we have a portal system where you can go from the web anywhere through the portal system and then come into our network, which they can do from home, which they can still do from school. It's slower, and it's a little clunky, so they don't necessarily do that. But they can bring their own device in and get to the internet, but they will not be able to access their files on our H-drive there.
Is your demographic system, your grading and all that stuff, is that, the teachers access that, come home?
Yes, that's web-based. It's Power School, it's web-enabled. So anywhere you can get to the web, you can get to that.
So that doesn't, that's not clunky at all, that just, it's the same-
Doesn't matter where you are for that.
So you can access hack and tack from your-
Yeah. We can do that.
I was just curious, I wonder if they have a second one?
No. I think what we're looking for is to have teachers, well, let me back up. Have teachers issued their own laptops, or did they?
Not laptops, no. There's a teacher workstation in every, in every classroom.
Okay.
But they don't have their own laptops issued.
Okay. Okay, so it's in the, it's in the classroom?
Correct.
So if they do, if they want to do their work at home on their grades, it's whatever they, device they have at home?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, or from any, any station anywhere in the district.
In the district, they can just log in?
Yeah.
Are any things like, like the first day of school when you come home, when the parents come home and have 1,600 sheets to fill out, is any of that online at your school?
Some of it, but not a whole lot. That is one of the goals, is to get everything into the student information system, but it's not, you know, all the nursing information, all that stuff, it isn't in there yet, no.
And what about, is there like a digital backpack, so that if I choose not to have my children bring home every flyer, I can just get it emailed to me?
Some of the schools do, some of the principals do produce that stuff that goes home that way. They will email out, you know, the weekly updates and things like that, but that's a building-by-building decision, and we have not asked them to make it all digital at this point now.
And do I identify any digital gap within the town?
That was a concern to us. We have not, we just felt we would try to address it the best we could if people came to us. Certainly, everything's available, hard copy. No one has stepped forward, but we still don't believe that perhaps people aren't getting the information that way. But no one has stepped up to us and said, we can't do that. But for instance, our high school students register for classes at home with their parents online. No one has come to us and said, I can't do that, or they've gone to their guidance council during the school day, or they can go to the public library. Anywhere they get to a computer, they can get online and register for their classes.
We're piloting that, I believe, at the high school district right now, right?
Yeah.
Because our, our demographic, East School allows that, and we're trying to get out of that business of having them sit down, so that's, that's a good thing. We're heading in the same direction. Do you folks have, like, we call it tag, teacher access center and stuff like that at the middle school and elementary schools, or just at the high school?
What's a teacher access?
That's in, putting your grades, and a home access center where parents can get access to their kid grades online. Yes, we're at, we're six through 12 now, we're heading down to second grade?
K through five.
K through five, okay. All levels have, we use Power School K-12, so all levels have access to it. The degree to which it's, they're still doing some narrative report carding at the elementary level, so some of that has to be done that way. That is not electronic yet. They'll try and figure out how to make that happen, but certainly from grade five on up, all grades are in there, and it's live. As the teacher puts it in, it becomes available to the parents who want to see it.
Grade five is part of the middle school?
Yes, grade five is in the middle school.
Getting back to these devices, you said the administrators have them? Teachers have their own, or they could use their own if they wanted to, right?
The district hasn't distributed them to teachers yet, but they can bring their own in.
What about those teachers that are the first grade, I think you said, that were piloting this? Are they using that for most of the things, and other people are using their desktop that's in the classroom? Or are they just using it as an instructional tool?
That's a good question. I don't know if they, to the degree to which they've replaced it. You know, I've certainly, I've got both, and find that some of the software things that I do, I can do on both, and some things, the iPad just doesn't quite give you the same screen, same functionality, so it, for instance, our online application system, AppleTrack, just really doesn't function very well on the iPad. You can't see its screens, you can't deal with it, you can't get to where you want to. But our online system for professional development called ProTrax works very nicely.
It's the same thing as...
Yeah, ProTrax. So that works okay, AppleTrack for some reason doesn't. So I don't, I don't know with those teachers, you know, whether they're, I would imagine Power School supposedly works pretty well on, on the iPad as well, so that would all be all an elementary teacher would be using for student information. Yes.
I'm just out of curiosity, because I've never asked this question. Well, you were using it, does Munis work on that, or do you use your financial system, your HR system on yours either?
We are, no, that is not a web-based system. I don't know about the financial system, but I know the HR system we have is not a web-based system. It's called BudgetSense, and so, no, that only runs on, on the hardware in the district.
Were you able to use Munis on yours?
We didn't use it last year. Munis in the town issued last year without complicating with these things. I'm told that it does, but I don't think, we didn't try it out last year. I think those are the kinds of things you want to try out before you make huge investments and say, hey, let, what are the things that we do, that we do on a typical laptop or desktop, what will work on this? And then get the answers there before you make a huge investment. And I think we're trying to do it in a very deliberate way and in a prudent way.
When you guys, in the district, were looking at these things, were you, decided to check with Apple, were there other districts around you that were doing this kind of stuff, or that you're aware of?
I'm not aware, no. We made a decision to go down and visit with the Apple folks, and then come back and try it out on our own. Now that we're doing it, I think those teachers have gone out and reached out and connected with other people, either online or, probably more online than anything else, probably in collaboration chapters of some type to learn more about what to do.
What made you start with the first grade? Was it something to do with the curriculum, or was it just the teachers, the enthusiasm of the teachers?
It was the two individuals.
Okay, with a proposal?
Just highly dynamic, and had done some work on their own with them, and were really gung-ho, and kind of stepped up and pretty much championed the idea that they'd like to try it and make it work.
What about, what about professional development in like the iPads, have you seen, or with the computers, have you seen a lot where the teachers going out after it themselves, you're requiring it on your days, your teacher-in-shop days?
We've done some things like that, but we, you know, the, the more specific ones down in the technology education areas, the art teachers are using it quite a bit now, the business education applications, those teachers are using it quite a bit. The science teachers have had the guys from PASCO come in and work with them, showing how to use different pieces of equipment, how to calibrate it, how to use it in labs, things like that. The world language folks have had people come in and show them how to do certain applications on their lab. So there's been some, you know, it's been, you know, pieced together by the department chairs, as the departments have called for, in their level of readiness.
I'd like to take John up on your recommendation and put together the idea that I'm talking about in a written format for a pilot, and bring it to the next meeting, just so people can see as a draft, let's say you have to adopt, but at least we'd put in writing the things that I've been talking about, and we'd have something to discuss there, and we could put that on the agenda for the, for that discussion we have at JFK on the seventh. Any other questions for Dr. Sherman? Appreciate it. We went too far. I appreciate it.
I have a question. East School, do we pay yearly to pick that up, and how much does it cost? Or was it, what, one time, and then a maintenance fee?
There is an annual cost there. It's, it's part of that 404, I believe, John, isn't it?
Yeah, it's part, I don't know off the top of my head.
It'd be built in.
Should be.
You've got it there.
And do we have a contract to stay with them so long? Do we look at other places, or we're just comfortable so we're happy with it?
No, 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 that, that's like Munis, that's like a four-year thing to get, to get that up and running. That is...
Well, I mean, it's...
Okay, I mean, and I think...
That's not a $500 machine.
That was a long one.
That takes a long time.
But you come from where we came from.
Yeah, we...
Starting off the adnics.
Yeah, we were coming from an antiquated system, and, but it took us, we had to literally build it from scratch, and if you don't take the time to do that, you will have all kinds of problems. And ours has gone relatively smoothly as we build capacity with the people who are running it.
Especially when it's pretty much done by volunteer principals and administrators doing it, because that's the other thing, and that's part of my homework assignment, I do have a description there that you asked for.
Yeah, I want to get into that, because I, because I think that would help, I think we understand the need for it, but I think the more we put out there what they would do, I think would be good for us. But it's like changing your financial system and changing your demographic and grading system. You don't do it casually. It's a huge issue, and John's correct, it's almost all volunteers, and we're losing some of them. I left last year, and I was the chairman of that committee, Mr. Duffy's leaving now. He does a big chunk of it in terms of the permissions that people have, and that is, we have to make sure we train somebody to do that piece of it, because it's done on the school side, not on the IT side. They just keep the machines running, basically.
Well, it's unrelenting, it's like the old cliche, you know, building your plan and flying it at the same time. You still meet the obligations of scheduling kids, course changes, credits, transcripts, grade point average, graduation requirements, it's, it's all there, you still have to make a, and that's, you remember the streak of the science we had with most of that stuff, so...
Yeah, and Tony, Tony said on that committee, we met every Monday for years.
For years, for years.
And it's, it's working pretty smoothly. I think, yeah, the fact that we're able to bring it down, make it K-12, hack and hack, that's a big deal, and it went relatively smoothly after we did the trial on the high school, and just, they brought in the middle school this year, and I heard it was seamless from what they did.
Same, same one, thirty, thirty.
And that's a good thing, and that's what parents have been telling us they want it. I'd like to get into the thing that John just mentioned there, if you've got that draft job description.
Do you want to, do you want me to give you those last two?
You have that? No, I didn't know you...
The East School renewal is just under 76,000. The hack renewal is about 3,100, and then incorporated in that is IEP plus, which is another almost 13,000. And that's, those are the pieces that jump out.
That's the specialities that deals with IEPs.
And how much was IEP?
12,420.
Yes, we did.
About 90,000 for the physical portion a year.
Because our total is, what, 90,000? Yeah. I don't know what we paid those people, there was a big upfront cost to that, plus the training, and then we have to pay, we have to pay for, for help, the help desk, we get built for that as well.
So it's approximately $100,000 a year, is that what you're paying?
Yeah, it's roughly 90, and that's just the pieces that are jumping out at me, so...
Okay, that's this year.
That's, that's annual.
That's the next year. That's annual. But what does it go up every year? Just a ballpark.
It's not fixed for life, like...
Well, I'm sure it is.
Do they do enhancements yearly?
Yeah, we, we get updates, several updates a year.
That's what I said, we stress that way.
That's part that you're paying for that.
I think it's part of your annual... I'll build the budget, we just put in a 3.5 CPI, so...
Okay, so about 3% a year.
We also have to pay those people to be around when we do the rollover from one year to the other, and we have to be around as well. There's people at every level to bring that up, and then they have people that are working for us trying to make sure that rollover goes smoothly. John, do you want to take us to this?
Yeah, just, just to talk on it real quickly, I know Mr. Dresz it worked once, I don't know if you want him to come up here or not, but basically, this is kind of a cut-and-paste job from a few places, one of them being Newington. Dr. Sherman was nice enough to share the job description they had for a person that was just wearing one of those three hats, pretty much. The web design kind of things, the town was nice enough to share their job description on the Webmaster, and then we sat and spoke a little bit about, you know, what would we think they're doing with the PD, the professional development of the in-service type thing, and you can kind of go down there and see that. We had the person reporting basically to two people, the Assistant Superintendent Schools and the Curriculum Director, because it overlapped some of the things that were in there. So as with all of our job descriptions, it basically has other duties as assigned and required as the very last item, so it is still open. And we thought that this kind of caught the general flavor of what we were talking about with these three, these three types of things that are there. And if you read the job goal, probably that's kind of the executive summary would be the job goal, and then you can get into some of the responsibilities that were there, and as I said, those were put together and just to, sort of helicopter view, looking down pretty broad-based descriptions. And the proposal I made to you, I was thinking this might be in the $55,000 range, you can see it requires a college degree, it said, you know, a bachelor's degree required, a master's degree preferred. We didn't necessarily go with a degree such as a computer science or something like that, because we really weren't too sure the right person. You might find a person, I'm going to just go to the teaching profession, you actually might find a retired school teacher that has a very, very strong background in the PD part of it, and possibly even the data collection type things, and that might be the person you want to go to, and they wouldn't have a computer science degree, they'd have an education degree. And from what I'm being told, there's people coming out of banks, and people coming out of the insurance companies around Hartford, that probably have some of the skill sets to do a good portion of this. So I think you'd have a viable job goal, once this was posted, I think people would have an interest in it, and it's something that we've talked about for years, and in fairness to the other two job descriptions I had, both of them were dated like 2007, and I think they just filled a position where you are recently, or you've had that for...
We've had one filled for three years.
Good for you.
All right, so we just had a new person come on board.
Yeah, and the one from the town was about the same time, and I don't know when they filled theirs, but it sounds like, you know, we've been talking about these as other communities on the school district.
You've been talking about a lot of these responsibilities for years.
We've talked, because part of it, at one time you had, you really had a person before I came.
Right.
It was before I came, but you actually had a person, Tony probably remember the fellow's name, that did, did all of the data collection. It was, it was not to the degree that it was now, but it was dealing with your state testing and different things were being done through Title I testing and things like that, so you were able to put things together. He was also able to put together data on things that were questioned, you know, just like follow a Head Start kid through, and they were able to do that and report back, so...
I agree with the stuff you've done, I'm happy, very, very happy that you put this in, because I think it's, it's long overdue for the needs that we have and the direction that we have to go. I would not want to see it, though, get caught up in the Webmaster part of it. I think that that's a piece of it, but that can drain you, that's not the most important piece, the, the data collection, the professional development.
That's why we were making the person responsible pretty much for the board's webpage, you know, the central office part of it, and be available to help the schools, but more from the PD side. We were thinking more along the lines of, if there's a new secretary, she doesn't really have to put something on the web, you know, how does she hook to a link, send it to a link, that this person would explain that to that person, and we were hoping that that would be part of it, because when we're saying the PD, we're saying both certified and non-certified, because we know we have a lot of non-certified people who use a lot of technology, the secretary.
Absolutely, this is a non-certified position.
Yeah, this is non-certified, this is non-certified, and it reports to the school district, this is not under the IT umbrella with Paul Russell, although I would, I would encourage you, if this goes forward, to involve that department in the interview search, bring them in and have them be a part of it, so they can see what we're looking at and how they would complement that position.
Did you discuss with them when you were putting this together?
No, no, I discussed the idea of, you know, being available on call, to sit in and help us a little bit in terms of, you know, some questioning and seeing what they thought of the person, or if they knew references. A lot of times, some of these people might know a reference because they work there, and they could help us with the references, so...
Any questions to Dr. Gallagher on this, or for Chris?
This would take the burden off of, I guess, our staff that's updating webpages right now?
To, to a degree, no. It wouldn't, the staff would still be responsible, but it would, it would help them to be able to be, able to do it as quickly as they can and know what to do, so...
I think we envisioned it as a dedicated resource, so that way, there is an issue with getting up to one, maybe one person's...
They would be like technical support.
In addition to...
Actually updates the webpage.
And more accessible to, be right, right there. I mean, the town's been very good, the fellow at the town's been very helpful to us at different times, but on the other hand, he has town duties, and sometimes we call over, and he just can't get to us because he's doing something for the town, which is primary important.
I think this position, though, would be influential in helping us to determine what we actually need to make sure that that website is manned all the time and current, because we need help with that right now. That has to be addressed.
You're right.
But how and what, this person could certainly lead a committee to get that information for us.
But I think you're correct, and you, as you said, lead a committee to get it done, and then I think right-herd on it to make sure it is up-to-date and not falling behind.
Because it's a lot more than most, than obviously.
Right, right. But I think the bigger part to me is leading, leading the charge on how we're going to warehouse our data, how we're going to collect our data, how we're going to make sure the teachers and administrators have access to that data, ideally from pre-K all the way up to high school, so we don't have, we don't have, you know, seven grades of paper records, or sixth grades of paper records, which are just not usable. Do you look at this as 10 or 12 months, or is it to be determined?
Twelve, I always think a 12-month position.
Benefits?
With benefits, yes, yeah.
So salary's going to be 55?
I think 50, that was my range, I was thinking 55, just based on some conversations I had. What's that?
That, I would not include.
No, not including benefits, benefits would be on top.
So you're looking at...
I think a lot of the responsibilities, we had the discussion about the 10 and 12 months, there's a lot of responsibilities in this particular, all of that would take place over the summer time, particularly with data collection.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I would assume it would be a 12 month. I just want to know what the benefits, what's our multiplier of the benefits package?
Somewhere in the area, usually factored above the 10,000 on top of that if you factor it in, because it's a non-certified position, there's a town pension involved, because it's as well health insurance.
Right, the pension has health insurance.
pension, health insurance, like Obamacare level money.
So maybe like, maybe 15?
Depending upon if it's a family plan, or somewhere between 10 and $50,000 range is the total package, depending upon the...
What their co-pay was.
Right, but this would not be a union position.
Unless, unless the union petition take them in, and then if they did that, we might be talking about some of it being a confidential information, possibly the data material, so at that point, it'd be up to Labor Board to declare if they would put it in a bargaining unit or not.
That's okay.
That's what I'm saying. We would, we would start out right, and I don't see this fitting into any of our positioning unions, I don't see it as a clerical or a, or a para type position, I think it's a completely different position right now. We don't have this position, I don't see where it would dovetail into any of the, it's not certified, we're not looking for a teaching certificate on that, they wouldn't be teaching school.
Did you look at any other districts who have, besides Newington, were there any others?
No, because I got the assignment so fast, I just...
Make it John work here too fast.
It's not like you could search the web.
So, we could search the web, we can go out, we, you know, you can subscribe, and we have some model, we did pull what we had in our models, but it really didn't fit, because what we were trying to do was piece it together, so we thought the mission would be, we knew, you know, Dr. Sherman had mentioned, he had one down there, and then we also knew the town had, so we went, we went over there. And that's just a draft, that's, that's not concrete, there'd be changes if you were moving in that direction, I'm sure.
I think one of the reasons we want to get this is people ask us, what is this position? I think the more information we get out, it's a valuable position, I can certainly endorse it, because I know what, I know what has to be done and what's missing now, but I think we want to get it done so, so the folks know exactly what we're talking about in terms of what the responsibilities are, and they're quite large, particularly for the direction we're going to go.
If you want to go from technology to basketball, I could take you there.
Well, we had a couple of questions about that.
You did. This was a reply to the question of, if you reinstated, the freshman sports were reduced, were reduced, we didn't do swimming, but that was not going to do with a reduction, it was participation. The athletics department, he's looking over, it says over and Barry Bernstein, hopefully you can read his printing, he scribbled something there, but he's giving you pretty much a ballpark figure of what you're looking at to reinstate, and watch it because he has double totals up there, so basically you're looking at about $34,000 total between reinstating at infield high and reinstating at Fermi High, and you can see the price.
We don't have freshman baseball?
I don't know. They have JV. That's usually where.
Let me just take a quick look at John's, I appreciate you getting yours.
It's pretty much, you would say it's pretty much the salaries, we just took that out of your contracts with the teachers association, the officials, he's estimating, you know, how many he needed for the number of games, the transportation, he's put down on that, come up with his totals and it's pretty straightforward. The question I had for him was why are they getting $800 for five away football games and why are they getting $900 for 10 basketball games, and I was thinking he was going to tell me they had more buses going to football, but what, according to what it was, I guess in the Pequot Conference I believe is one infield high schools in, there is quite a ride, so he was estimating that it would be, it would be more, but it wasn't quite, you know, I was expecting it to be more than $100, he kind of thought that would be it.
So is this.
The other thing to have out here too, he's assuming, I think he says that in his written notes here, he's assuming that they still can outfit kids, and the other thing that happens with football, they have to certify the helmets, that's a law they have to certify, so if he had to go in and certify some helmets, you'd have some cost to get helmet certification to upgrade, you know, so that.
Do we have to also get the medical stuff, we have somebody that's at the game, I'm not sure whether it's a param.
We have, we have a trainer and then, I don't think at the freshman games they had the ambulance and all that, I think that's just for the varsity means, they had the ambulances, so, but the trainer would be there, but I don't see that being adding that much to it.
So to bring back freshman sports then, the total is 34,000?
Approximately.
Approximately, yeah, okay. Does he, did, I haven't asked this question, I think some other folks have been asking, whether, if we were to do that, can we schedule it, or is it?
No, he's saying you can schedule, he said that, he also told me you could schedule middle school, I thought one of you would ask me that.
We did, yeah.
He said, no, he said, show them up middle school.
Is it mine, high schools, or is that?
Sorry, I can catch your question.
Could the high schools be combined so that we have?
It would depend, and I'm not that familiar with the CIA C rules, it would depend on how many kids came out for the team, if there's a number, if a certain number come out at one school, they'll say, no, you have enough students at that school, you can't combine.
Right, because I'm thinking if we don't have enough students come out.
If you don't have enough students, then you'd have a petition there for a co-op, you'd have to co-op, and they would give it to you because it's basically a number.
Like the hockey.
That's exactly what happened with the hockey, right?
Yeah. Participation fell down and they qualified to combine, so they combined.
Swimming, too, remember, summers.
Yeah, swimming was actually three, it was summers and field majority, and we still didn't have enough kids, I think you had three or four kids, one from summers and two or three from high.
Even though it's 3400, this doesn't include pay to play, I mean, that could bring it down a couple.
Yeah, that's just right for that, yeah.
This one is not playing some other sport.
They still pay, it's just a max.
They'd still pay, they'd hit the max and then they would qualify.
We'd get these two sports, if it's their baseball, they'd get for free. They'd get the 100, the 100 and the, they'd get free B and B.
This year there was a huge turnout for boys soccer at Fermi, and there was enough freshmen to make a freshman team, I believe, I don't know if you know anything about that, but they couldn't do it because, so they made a really large JV team.
Couldn't make.
So I don't know if that's soccer, we didn't have soccer before, so.
Soccer as a freshman, you didn't have soccer?
We didn't have freshman soccer, it was JV or varsity.
JV, varsity.
Yeah, but this year they had a really large turnout for the boys soccer at Fermi, so they made a really large JV team.
Like almost had two JV teams.
They almost had two JV teams, yes.
Maybe that's the way to go.
It's the description, it's allowed.
Right.
Yeah, they're ruled by the CIC rules, and they've got to stay within those bounds because they're a member, a member organization. I don't remember when I asked you about the middle school stuff, I think that was around 60,000 before, right?
I don't know, it was.
It's in the, it's in that list, the reduction list, Chris, it's in the reduction list of 60.
So that was the old price, when did we cut from, two years ago?
2010, 2011, somewhere.
So probably closes, do we ask Barry to get us an update on that, I think just to make it current to today's numbers?
Sure.
It was 57 before, I think it's got to be 60 grand now, I would say.
I thought 60 was around, but this 57 is what it was when we.
Yeah, just so we know.
Your difference there now is you have a sixth grade, so your decision would be, you have like sixth graders participators, it's just going to be seven, eight, so do you want it seven, eight, or do you want it six, seven, eight, or do you want it?
Can I ask, I'm just showing me a question.
Go ahead.
You have middle school sports in there, do you not?
True middle school wouldn't have sports, they have a really good intramural program.
Yeah, we're really good, we got rid of both, I mean, you know.
If you could return one, if you were only doing one, in my opinion, I'd look to do the intramurals first, try to do the intramurals first and then do the end of school.
Could you explain to me what intramurals are?
Intramurals is sports that are made up within the, within the school, it's intro means inter wall, so intramural is inside the wall of the school, and basically what it is, they play the sports, they play against their classmates, they don't get suited up, they don't go out into another community and play the competitive, and the theory behind it is, you want to expose these children, it should be an experience to do that because your star player for basketball, if the soaring height of five foot five might stop growing in eighth grade, and when he hit high school, he's not even going to be on the team unless he's a manager, and you're, you know, so you're, the idea is you expose these kids to this and then they go with that, but.
And what sports would you have, like regular ones like baseball, basketball, or would you have things like?
I think you could have.
Floor hockey or volleyball.
Yeah, floor hockey, basketball, I think, I think as long as it's an organized sport and there's supervision to play it, but you don't need officials, it's, you know, the teacher would be helping out or the intramural director, whatever the title was, the person that's with them and that type of thing would be more.
We did it for 30 years, okay, we had a big intramural program for 30 years, and we did it by wing, it was co-ed, they did it, we used to alternate around the sports, the interscholastic sports, and so they'd be outside with street hockey on the basketball courts, they'd do it out there, they would do basketball on the offseason, and then they would do flag football on the other ones, and I think they did softball, they didn't do baseball, they did softball because it was, anybody could play, and they'd make up teams, we'd have a, they'd have a schedule of the games and all that stuff, and we had, basically we had two people that used to do it, did it for 30 years, and the kids loved it, it really, and it got more, it got more kids involved than you would typically get while it.
Why did it change?
It got cut, not as a budget cut.
But you got into interscholastic?
We were always into interscholastic sports.
Oh.
Always.
So it was in addition to?
We had an intramural program from day one and it went for 30 years.
And it followed the same rules that if you were involved in intramurals, you kept up your grades, I mean, was that?
I don't remember, I don't, I don't remember whether that was part of it, interscholastic, you had to have the C minus average and all this stuff, I just don't remember because, John, that was what, eight years ago?
I don't think, but I imagine that you could have your.
You have your.
Stephen said, John, if you keep misbehaving, I'm going to keep you after school for detention, you will not be at intramural since you'll be in my detention class.
Well, that always came first, you had to, you had to deal with that first, yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, we're talking about Steve's school climate and school unity and to have a program like this, or whether it's the sports or intramurals, I think that's a good.
One of the things, I agree, one of the things that you could work out if you didn't have interscholastic sports is you have more facilities to use, when we did it before, we used to have to alternate around the interscholastic sports, and so we would do, we would do street hockey when they were playing basketball and things like that, whereas now that you have the gym and the outside fields all the time, you could probably run more kids out there, and the staff ended up being the refs.
You had two people that ran it.
They ran it, they ran it, but keep in mind that we had interscholastic sports and probably five or six sports at that time, so there's another whole group of athletes that were doing that, so you'd probably need more than two if you're going to do six to 12.
Suppose you did six, seven, eight.
Yeah.
Right, so you would, but you would need, you know, teacher, somebody to come in and you have, they'd be paid like the other coaches.
You'd have a stipend for it, they're good stipend, people would apply for it, and you could run them in shifts as well, you know, you have an A, B, C season and you run your kids through, because you only have so much space and so much time, so to make them fit in, you'd have to work something.
It didn't work, they didn't do it so the kids took the late bus though, because there's no way you could.
Right.
Deal with the late bus, it would go longer, it'd go for like an hour and a half, two hours by the time it was done.
That's similar to the, some of the sporting events.
Right, and research, pick them up.
And it worked out, it just, it worked out, I'd say, very, very successful.
When did you get rid of it, was it there when Tina and I were?
It was there when you were there.
I played soccer.
If you played street hockey.
I played street hockey. Sorry. I was one of those soccer players.
People, the, people have been, the one sport that people keep bringing up that isn't offered anywhere else is field hockey, okay, every other sport, there's a town's equivalent to it, maybe cross-country and stuff like that, but that's a sort of sport there, but I, you know, field hockey.
But you could do a field hockey and a street hockey if you wanted to.
Under title nine, you'd have to have something equitable.
Yes, you would.
If you offer something for boys, you have to offer something for girls.
That's what I'm saying, if you do street hockey or.
To make sure the program is viable, you're going to have to set the student body as well.
You're right, yeah, this is work.
We got that before.
This is work you have to do, but, you know, John's correct, it would be, it would get more people involved, and it does do an awful lot for culture and climate, because the kids, they really get into it, the school kids.
How many days a week did you do this?
I think they did it, they didn't do it five, I think they did it three or four. Was it three?
Three.
Was it three?
But we were, when, what you were saying is you would almost need somebody per grade, so you would do a sixth grade, a seventh grade and an eighth grade program, and then you could rotate the equipment through the.
Depends on what they want to do.
What they did before was seventh, eighth grade, they didn't get into grades, that's my recollection, they combined it, the kids play together everywhere else, I mean, there's no reason why they shouldn't play together in intramural sports, and I think it works out pretty well, but it's, I don't remember how much that cost, I think at the time it was like $20,000 and we dealt with, somewhere around there, that was, I'm going to say eight years ago, that was a long time ago.
To complicate matters even further, the intramural program we had at the elementary hall.
That was pretty popular, too.
A week, volleyball, three times.
Yeah, volleyball was another one of those, those winter sports, it was great.
Seventeen thousand.
Some volleyball at elementary was played on your knees because they were in the building with a regular sized roof.
That's right, that's right.
Before they had the gyms.
Okay, if you can get us just an updated number, and I don't know whether Mr. Bernstein could get us a.
We'll run it both by six, seven, eight.
Six, seven, eight, but also if you get us a, just an approximate cost for, you know, his best guess on doing intramurals, because he's run that before.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay, that'd be great. Anything else on sports here that we want to deal with? Okay, my understanding is we still have access to the fields no matter what, right?
Yes, if you're first choice on the fields and then the town would be second, and then outside. And then the last thing we have, I'm hoping you brought it, was the request to go to zero. This was Mr. Johnson's request and I had Chris calling Mr. Johnson to make sure that we were all on the same page, or if I think we did, we keep asking. And basically, if we understood the request, it would be that if the superintendent's budget included no additions whatsoever.
Except for special.
Except for the special education, what would it look like, so what we did is we took out the data collection web-based master, we took out the elementary guidance counter, because that was the last two that were there, and that basically gave you some extra money because you're using it in other ways, so what we decided to do was to, we would add back in three library rooms and we'd throw some more money into supplies just to round it out, but that was kind of what we thought you, the ask from Mr. Johnson, so hopefully that's what it was.
And this would affect class size because you are getting rid of teachers.
Oh, yes, you're getting, you're getting, you're cutting the teachers in certain areas here, you could be in to your bigger class. Thank you.
Can I ask, Chris, I just looked through this again and I, does TLC is here and I missed it?
TLC is currently funded through a grant, so you are probably not seeing the teachers and the tutors, I'm sorry, tutors, not the teachers, it's still up there, but they're funded through Title I.
And all four states.
And that would be funded again through the grant the next year?
That's our plan.
Okay, and we anticipate the Title I funds are going to come through and what's similar?
We're anticipating that, they won't be at the same exact schools that we're in right now, but, you know, we're hoping that at least we would just shift the funding in different ways and by moving some other Title I funding that we have, you know, in academic support and things like that, that we'd still be able to support those TLC groups.
My understanding is that the council's going to take up the 1% thing at their next meeting, is that yours as well?
Haven't had a conversation with town manager, I'm not, I'm not sure what he has from his agenda.
Because pretty much everything we have on this thing is contingent upon that 454 and that 627 coming in.
And the 600 number is, we need to be saving that out of this year's budget.
Correct. Have you started, or, based on the discussion that we had here before, have you started that, or discussed me out with the council?
My own devious way I have, but she hasn't sent out anything official saying her stuff.
Always just in your own devious way, John, I'm just worried that, and I think you do too.
Don't keep mine in the iPads or your group, so, I'm trying to save my money.
How does the town council fund that?
I don't know.
Do they have special apps on there?
I'm very careful what I say about the town council.
No, no.
Yeah, they get everything on there.
What's everything?
They can actually sit there, all their emails come, they have access to any PDFs or any files, this is what I'm understanding, that they can, they need a document, they can pull it up and view it on their screen.
Instead of, instead of getting packets like we.
Paperless, paperless, and if you go to it, that would be the one thing I would ask you, if you go to it, we'd like you all to be paperless, so I know, I keep hearing the people that love it, but there's a couple of people that I know sometimes are kind of like me, they're a little cautious of technology and I just want to make sure that they feel comfortable.
Look at that, John.
They feel comfortable, you know, annoying because I don't want to have to get.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
You just got that.
Well, yeah, I'm worried, I'm worried.
From the investigative work that I've done on this, I'm being told that if you've mastered texting on your cell phone, you can handle the paperless agenda, so, so I know some of you are quite adept at the texting.
Do we get an educational discount?
Yes, we do.
More to that members?
We get, yes, we get an education, we buy them.
Are you going to buy your own, is that what you're proposing, that you all buy your own, or?
I am, I am getting the, waiting for the new model. I will tell you that.
I was hoping that we could have a conversation with the vendor, it's only nine machines, and say, you know, we're looking into some work for next year, and I think if we make a little bit of a presentation to them, we'd like to pile it a little bit with the board and then maybe they help us a little bit with the price on that.
Are they wanting to pay for my own as long as I?
Yeah, no, I was just being facetious, I'm not looking.
No, I'm getting the push elsewhere.
With your zero salaries that you all draw, I don't think anyone would expect you to buy, to buy a $500 computer.
A lot of us are getting both in our work section, we need to embrace this, and you know, a nice little, you know, feeling we got a better deal from Apple may just purchase right over.
All right, so I think that's one of the things we want to look into also, because when you get into this, we talked about to bring your own device thing, you, there are regulations you have to agree to in terms of your personal stuff, so you start mixing your work with your personal and it's on a school-owned machine or a town-owned machine, there has to be some understanding there, you know, so.
That's why I would be willing to buy my own device, that's why I feel that that's the most autonomous way to go.
Yeah, because the town council left their term, hand in theirs back in?
I don't know, I don't know what the arrangement is, we'd have to ask Mr. Poplar.
Are they handing theirs back in when they don't get reelected?
Yeah, if it belongs to the town.
Oh, yeah, if it belongs to the town.
Yes. It's just like if you're left and.
But you spend a lot of time customizing your equipment for yourself, that's why it's always nice to.
I would not be, I'd not be looking for it, mine has everything I want on it and, you know, I wouldn't need it at that point, I think we just have to know which apps that they want, I probably have more than they do right now, you do too.
Yeah, we're just people that get on the system in a fashion that would be compatible.
I think saving the paper is one thing, but I also think if we're going to make decisions about this stuff, we should be more than conversant in it, we should, we should actually understand what it's going to do and be able to answer kid, parent questions, teacher questions and so on, I'd like to have us.
We text the board.
Well, yeah, absolutely, this is.
If you wanted to be on the next agenda as an action item for you and Mr. Russell will be there, you can give an idea of what you're looking for, how many of you have an interest in having one, and we can move forward from there with it, so.
I think that would be fine.
I very much like the keyboard that they got.
Yes.
As well.
Yeah, we can bring you.
I thought they piloted how they wanted it.
And we could, you have a meeting with the council on Thursday night, you have a joint meeting with the council on Thursday night, you can ask the town manager maybe to see if you can get that on the agenda, maybe they could give you five minutes just to explain.
Sit us all next, we'll sit every other person so we can play with their iPads.
That'd be great.
Interesting picture.
Have you had a fun?
Let me check and make sure they're really work.
Timmy, you do have a free trainer, just so you know that. He has a better one than I do, so, I mean, Mr. Brass, and we're also, some of us are going to go down to a workshop, a bunch of people are going down to a workshop at Cass There's a bunch of people going down to a workshop at Cass because they're encouraging all their administrators to use them. And they've been doing this for a while. I think actually Dr. Schuman's going down as well. And I think it's where they're going. I think at the very least, if we're going to make a decision, we need to be up to date on what this stuff can do. And hopefully, if it's going to be more efficient and more cost-effective, that's what I'm looking for.
Do you see it as tablets in general or iPads specifically?
At this point, iPad is the one that people are going with. You're going to run into compatibility issues and stuff. You have to make a decision. Because I don't think you're going to buy one for one grade level and one for another.
Oh, I was just in general.
Right now, this is the one that's, this is the one that's out there and has the most apps out there, has the most support.
It's not the joke at this point.
It does. And I think, you know, I, it's not, that's, and actually, the prices aren't that much different.
Can I ask a question? How much are these things versus?
About $500.
Up to $800 depending on the number of devices you've got.
I think they brought this.
And if you have other key apps, three, three to eight.
And the feeling is that you're saving, the sales things that I've seen come across my desk, they're acting like you probably save in the neighborhood of the cost of the machine and paper over the course of the year. Supposedly, the paper and the time it's meant to stand and copy and all of that. They'll probably tell you you're saving $6,000, $7,000 on your agendas, your agenda packets over the year.
By not doing all these curriculums in, or doing them?
I guess you'd get them all.
We wasted that much paper.
And them all coming to our house.
One of the nice things about it too is that this is the original one. Okay, this came the first day you could ever get one. No, you don't need upgrade because I have the exact same, I have the exact same stuff that's on the two, the exact same software.
They are very consistent. I mean, like the two just has a camera and internet capacity. You know, like they are, they are being thoughtful at least that, you know, you can still use your first generation.
It's the power of the two, actually.
It's consistent, you can still stand.
Biggest difference is the camera.
Between one and two.
It's a four country.
That's right. You can't scan with them. My kid does it all the time. So anyway, so. Do you folks have any issue, put it on the agenda for the next time for action if we decide to go that way? Okay, that's great.
God, we say thank God to make more copies. I would love that.
I know.
I can scan anything and send it.
In terms of, in terms of looking at the budget, I just want to throw this out to you folks. We have not really looked at Dr. Gallagher's budget in any detail. We talked about the position and the information we got today was very, very useful. We did not talk about some of the other things. And I'd almost like to go through some of the, whether it be the positions or the CIP issues. The CIP issues are concerning to me because I've seen those trailers and went and took a look at them, the roofs, and I'm concerned about that. And I don't know whether you were ball, kind of just coming up with a number for those things, you know, ballpark number. Or were you, did you have some exact numbers on what those were looking at?
We could give.
We have three now and we're looking at three, two.
I was looking at three doubles. And I mentioned that to the town manager. I didn't give him any numbers. I strictly spoke to him about, we're talking about that, we're talking about some playground equipment. And then the last one that we had on there was the autism class. If we were looking to be preparing for that because we know it's coming. So we'll be thinking about it for next year. Not that we're doing it for next year, I don't think. It'll go to the parkment with the following year, it'll move to middle school. So my feeling was, we'd gone online and you'd spoken to one of the companies. We had just a general price for a single, a double for that. And I was thinking it would be generic because normally when the board has given a CIP to the town, they just give them a general ballpark number and they link it up to the town to sit. Because they'll know, you know, through their engineering people and all of that, what needs to be done. Because if we're looking at, we wouldn't give them prices, for example, for hookups. I'm assuming they can hook up to the existing electric that's there and the power that's there. So if that's the wrong assumption, that they're going to have to somehow figure out how to get lights and heat into the, and air conditioning into the units.
I think you'd have to upgrade all of that stuff. That stuff's 15 years old. Is my assumption correct that the intent was to do it for 2013 to 2014? Or is it 2013 to 2014 with here?
Ideally, I would like to see the trailers replaced over the summer. If they committed to it to pull them.
Over this summer?
Yep, because you yank them right out, the sooner the stool's out, get them out of there and roll new ones in. Because they're all prefab, it's simply setting them up. You saw Craig. Craig put how many trailers behind Stowe this summer. Didn't take very long at all. They pulled them in on a couple of big trucks and leveled them out and hooked them up.
Is there, do you know if, I mean, this might be a naive question, but have they bought theirs? And if they're obviously going to have a new building, they're not going to want them? Could we have them afterwards?
They are leasing them.
They're leasing them?
Because I asked about staying there so we couldn't.
So, and they can lease as well. As you said, we had prices on a lease also. You have your prices there, Chris? You want to just kind of give them a ballpark for their on the double and the single?
Sure. The, so the six classrooms, this was actually just a whole six classroom unit. The price of the unit was a little over $340,000, but then the installation was an additional $226,000. So that's what John was saying, there could be a difference there. On the individual unit, which was a two classroom, it was running about $110,000 with an $83,000 installation. And then we did get some prices on leases on.
That's a one-time cost? It was $110,000 plus what?
Plus an $83,000 installation.
So that's a one-time cost? Because they were a hundred grand when we bought them before John, per unit. I think we bought them used.
And that's a two classroom unit, 1,800 square feet.
I'm sorry, what was the square footage on that?
It's 1,848.
And the first one, what was the square footage on that?
Well, it was six classrooms, so it's 6648.
They're all standard sized classrooms. I think it was a 30 by 30 or 30?
It's 30 by 30 is the standard sized room. That would be 900. So if it's 1,800, it's doubles where you're going. And the other thing obviously they'd have to do if the council was amiable to it, they need to get in front of planning and zoning. Because Craig was doing their planning and zoning work about this time of year. It was February, March. But it went through, I thought, pretty smoothly for them through planning and zoning.
And it's also a half a million dollars as a referendum.
Maybe if you did the six, yeah. We've got three in there now. And if I understood your rationale, when you bring the autism classroom back, there's probably going to be two classrooms that they'd have to deal with.
Autism is probably going to need two rooms. But they need to be inside the building. They'll not allow you to go into a mobile.
But that was where your need was, because you just don't have any more room of it.
Yeah, well, the other need was the actual condition of the current rooms. I don't know if we'd make it through next year.
I agree. What I'm trying to do is get a sense of the urgency. And, because we need to talk to the council about that. If it's that urgent that we might make it through, we need to get that message through and get some real numbers there. The leasing numbers there, how much was that per year and for how many years?
The leasing, he gave it to me on a monthly rate. So you can go anywhere from a 24-month lease, 30, 36, 42, 48, 54, and 60 month lease. And they range anywhere from $3,700 a month to $7,800 a month depending on what kind of lease you want it to do. And whether or not you're going to do a buyout lease at the end or a return lease at the end.
And that's on the six classrooms?
That is on, that's for one double.
37 aren't?
Sorry, multiply that by three. You want three doubles.
But we wouldn't have to go to our own department, would we? But you need town council permission to leave.
And we still got to go through planning and zoning.
And do you still have to pay for the cost of installation or is that just factored into the lease?
I'm going to guess it's factored in, but I don't know for sure.
Is the space that we have the modules on now, would it hold the additional classrooms?
I believe it would because right now there's a double and then a single behind it. So I would think the footprint, which is two doubles, and there still looks like there's plenty of room behind it to do a third one.
You could definitely do the two doubles. You'd have to measure it out there and see whether you could. There's also a drain back there that you'd have to be careful of there.
And if it was, if the idea was they agreed on six, you wouldn't necessarily need all six the first year. So we'd want to buy, you know, two doubles and then come back the third year and put the other double down. And you would not be over your referendum limit at that point.
And this does say the installation is separate, so that would be in addition to the monthly lease.
They always are. I've moved trailers and they get a lot of money for them. Okay, I think it sounds like I got the answer I wanted, which was it's an urgent situation. And because I honestly have seen how they schedule, I don't know where they'd find the room for those classes if we had to move out of those units. And I've heard that, one, the heat's off and on. It's not working well at all in that room.
Well, the story I'm getting is, it's an issue, but the worst part of it, it sounds like it holds a lot of moisture. So when you get the rain like we had a week ago, it's sheeping in and they're going in and changing tiles and that, pretty regularly it sounds like.
That's a good answer. What was the other thing that you had on the CIP?
We had the playgrounds and I just think the fact that, you know, they turn in and taking a look at the Parkman Playground, they've roped, they taped it off now, they're not using it. Which they don't use during the winter anyways. So I just haven't sat down with the town manager yet to talk about what is the plan. And, you know, I just haven't had a chance to talk to the man about it. But I definitely think that we want playgrounds there for the stools, the elementary schools. And we definitely don't want them to be taped off. So we're trying to figure out exactly what's the town's plan.
Is that the only school that has?
Right now, but what I asked them to do and they said they would do it to go to all the playgrounds. Because that was one that they went to and they found, they come every year anyways. Kerma typically comes through and goes through. But this year, they said they really felt they were just going to close that one off. So they closed it off. So we asked them to do all the playgrounds, so everything was being looked at. You have some playgrounds that are very new. The Whitby Playground is a fairly new one. And you have other ones that are older. And again, the playgrounds were shelved, like a lot of things were with CIPs over the last few years. I don't think they've really put any new ones in for a while.
Parkman was the next one and right before our last. That's why we had the new playground put in, the PTO did that.
What about the one that was at Stowe? Did that stay there?
That stayed there and that was one of the things I mentioned to him. I didn't know if the town was taking a look to see how much is being used by the neighborhood people. I know Craig said they weren't, they're not using it. Obviously, it's a, you know, a sixth through 12th grade high school. They're not using it, but I don't know that the neighborhood people are using it or not. Even if you pull it out.
Could you pull it out?
You pull it out and you fence it so far.
It's very touchy subject between PTOs.
The PTO, when they funded that playground as well. And when it came up last year, that.
Parkman asked for it.
Right, everybody kind of thought it was up for grabs. And the residents of that area, I know, they kind of felt like, okay, so you closed our neighborhood school, at least leave us a neighborhood playground. And I know that there was a group that did go to the town council on it, but I don't know how that turned out.
Do we have a report as to what was wrong with Parkman? I mean, what's the?
I can find out. I didn't get a report. They just notified me that they closed, that the principal sent home the letter to all the parents. I copied all on the letter, I think. So we just saw that.
And at the Hazardville Memorial PTO meetings, they're very, they, you know, their playground, they feel is very small and in ruin themselves, so.
How much does a playground cost, John? It's a lot of money.
Fairly expensive. You're in the, what, $70,000, $80,000 range or higher than that.
Yeah, the one that we bought at Parkman, so I was on the committee when we bought it, we got a grant at the time, so we only had to pay half. So a lot of times we worked with that. And we also went with, you know, the PTO gave the money to Art so that we would be able to not have to pay for the shipping, the town printing for us and anything like that.
And we had a parent that matched ours. When we got to a certain amount of our own collections through the PTO, a parent came in and matched that.
Really?
Yeah. And that was another kind of an issue about keeping it there.
I mean, definitely some of the PTOs have been aggressive in getting the playground equipment because we knew the CIP money was no longer available.
So you can get back to them, what, have they assessed? Before we talk about people donating things, Vinnie brought up this, I think he wrote about that. I read that the nurses donated their money for their caregivers. Okay, and the, two thirds of it, right?
Yeah, they've been doing that for probably about the last seven or eight years. I think they started 2006.
Could you possibly invite them as board guests to come to our meeting, the next meeting? And I really think we should recognize those folks.
Take the next regular meeting in February?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
Not the one at the middle school in '17.
The 14th.
14. Yeah, we'll be in the council chambers if they could come to that, the president. Yeah, that would be, I think they, that was, we now are equipped at all schools if I'm not mistaken, right?
And it's kind of thing. Will they bring chocolate?
That's bad for your heart.
Not dark chocolate.
Thank you. In recollection, there were three things on the, and I may be wrong. You went through two things that we had for the CIP. What was the?
They got on the autism classroom.
Okay, we put it off for years, so that's.
We put it off. What I'm saying is I think they need to realize we need to get something over there. And what I'd like them to do is sit with the special ed coordinators and talk, not so much about the classroom part of it, but the room that they're going to use for OT and PT services. They need special things that have to be installed. And I just want to make sure that we're, they're aware of it and they understand this is a priority for the board that we definitely plan to move there in 2013, '14.
So you would take the room that you have over at Parkman now and move that over to?
Not the whole room. There'll be four students that'll be moving over, and maybe more by that year. But there's a group right now, about four students that need to go into the middle school no later than the following year. Not this September, but by the next September. We had talked about trying to do it for this year and then we had the space issue. And then, to be honest with you, it's so late in the year right now, even with some of this, I don't know if we could pull it off if we had to. But I think the intention now is, I think they've talked with the parents, everyone seems to be comfortable one more year at Parkman. We have the room, I'd like to have the room set up because a big part of those placements is the parents want to visit and see what you're talking about. What does this look like? And you say, I have a program for you. It's kind of like, well, show me what you're talking about. So if we have the rooms completed and we can come in and say, this is our intention, this will be where the program's housed, this will be where the bathroom is, this will be where the physical therapy and OT parts of it will be, that would be everyone's benefit. Because then they actually could do that. The other thing that could do for you, because we don't get a lot of them, but we have usually one or two a year, you might have a neighboring district and we want to run tuition student in. And that helps them as well. Their parents can come up and the special ed director can come up and look at it and say, you know, Enfield has this if you're interested. And if we accept them, you can charge them some tuition and offset some of your costs.
Basically, you charge tuition, it's basically a pupil, per pupil cost or?
No, we've typically on the special education, we try to run in the $25,000 to $28,000 range, which is still a bargain. And we don't transport, they have to bring them up themselves. But we try to be, you know, fair with it because they're neighboring systems and.
And you do the same thing sometimes to go to a program in a neighboring town?
Yeah, but there's been times that we've used a program, not necessarily a special ed program, but even just a facility. I know we've had the Fermi tennis courts were being ripped up a couple of summers back and Ellington was nice enough to let us, I think it was Ellington, it might have been Summers. No, it was Summers. We went up and used Summers and at different times when we've had, prior to getting new fields, we've gone to other schools and used their fields. They've done that.
Just a question for Chris, because it came up to me. I think you answered it once, but I don't remember the details of where it was in the budget. People ask about where the gate receipts go. I believe it goes into the activity fund, correct?
Correct.
And what comes out of the activity? The cost of like the police or something like that come out of that if we had a game, if we had a football game or something like that? You know, I think it was like a, what, $30,000 or more than that that went in from the high schools, gate receipts.
So I don't know the exact number of the gate receipts that have gone in there. I can tell you that the balance in that account is probably running about $67,000 right now. But it's because it's been built up over the years. And what we do is we have, right now, we have $50,000 offset of using that money in the athletic budget here. And we've done that for the last couple of years. So basically, the supply lines are reduced by $50,000 every, for the last two years and then going forward into next year. And the thought that if we need that money, we would take it out of the student activities account and offset it. So far, we didn't need it last year and I'm not sure that we'll need it again this year. So we did go ahead and budgeted again. Once we do use that, it is a one-time offset. The remaining money that's in there usually will get used for, if he really needs something that is just not in his budget. If there's something, you know, a run on uniforms or something that's above and beyond what he has. But otherwise, it just kind of forms up and that's why we decided to use it in this manner.
They qualify for state, they need extra ice time because it hasn't been budgeted. We buy the ice times for them. If they're playing, if they qualify for state and they're going down into the New Haven area, he might book the Peter Pan bus instead of a Smith bus for them, you know, to take them down, that kind of thing. They buy the varsity letters and the little medals, you know, for the awards and things like that. So it shoots for, you know, a lot of things. It covers quite a bit.
But that money's only used for sports?
Yes.
Nothing other than sports?
No, correct.
And is it going to the building activity account or the one that's downtown? I know there's one big one. I know how that works, but is it out of your controls? It's, okay, it comes out of your office.
It goes into Chris.
Yes, it is in Chris and it's managed by the business office here in central office, under my direction.
That answers my question. The other question that keeps coming up is the nutrition budget. I don't, I've heard it, I think twice. I don't, I'm not conversant in it. Could you explain the amount of money that they hold back there? And what I understand, and tell me if I'm correct on this, is that it's kind of budget neutral in the sense that they don't, doesn't cost us money. And they don't have money that they keep except for money to replace equipment and stuff like that.
Absolutely. All of that is correct. So the nutrition account is a separate fund within our finance system. It is held separately from the rest of our operating budget. Basically, I think the easiest way to look at nutrition is they run like they're a small business, only with lots of money that flows through them. But they are almost a separate entity. They are audited by our auditors every year. They are reviewed just like we are to the entire process. She is a nonprofit group within our EIN number, under our direction. And what a nonprofit agency says is that they're not allowed to maintain, or they may maintain up to three months of expenditures in their checking account at any given time. And this is a very large school system that tends to run about $600,000. So she does run and have that kind of a balance in there and I think that's probably what you're talking about. However, that department fully funds any expenditures for equipment, sort of CIP repairs, I guess, is what we're talking about. So in any given year, you know, she could be looking at replacing a walk-in freezer that's well over $100,000. So gratefully, the equipment that was built many, many, many years ago is really good equipment and it's been really hanging in there for a long time. But it is very old. I know that she has things in there that are probably well over forty years old, if not more, that could go at any minute. She repairs them until she just can't. She also, a couple of years ago, she put in a system at the secondary level, a point of sale. She funded that entire thing herself, funded all of the training. So, yes, she is a separate entity in that part. In our budget, we do have money built in where she does turn around, and we do pay the benefits for her employees, but she does turn around and give that back to us.
What if she ran into trouble and had two freezers go, or three, I remember when she replaced, it went to JFK, they were the originals, I believe, and I think that cost much more than a hundred thousand dollars. What if she didn't have enough money to do that? We would lend that to her and then get it paid back? Is that how it works or no?
Well, gratefully, like I said, she does keep those three months in there. So, I think I did a snapshot of about the last eight years, and she's been able to maintain about a five hundred, five hundred to six hundred thousand dollar balance in there. So, my hope would be that she'd still be able to fund something like that, even if there were two. I think that we'd probably come to you and have some discussions at that point, I'm not sure, you know, what we would do.
If there's a crisis.
Right.
The money that she has, it goes off when school lunches?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's the only money she does pay me?
Yeah, when we say school lunch, you know, that is also subsidized by the federal government, by the state, yes. You know, the free and reduced lunch program.
But she doesn't get any of our stuff?
No, we, what we do is, we pay for those benefits, and she does pay us back.
But none of our money is sitting in that five or six hundred thousand dollars?
No.
Okay.
We're just trying, people look at kind of pots of money that are around here, wonder where, how it goes. You hear it all the time, and we're just trying to respond. Yeah, so the next one would be six hundred thousand, right?
It depends on her operating expenses for the year, but it's about that mark.
And I'm not drawing the name of the, what it was in my head right now, but you might have seen in the paper last week. About every fifteen years, they upgrade whatever their food, their grade A lunches, so that's happened. And then between now and June, the board will have to, I don't know how they got this in there, I mean, as you talk about a funny unfunded mandate, it's really not costing you anything, but it's the only one that I know where the board has to take a vote as to whether you will or you will not comply with the Connecticut fresh food rule. And we have never complied with it, which is the majority of the schools in the state don't do. But we deliver a Class A lunch, I think is what it's called, but the rules they have would severely restrict the activities that go on at the football games with the french fries and the hot dogs and all of that. You'd be eating carrot sticks and celery, and that would be it.
Love it.
No cupcakes.
What do they have, they have to hide the shit, that thing with the chili and the potato or something like that, oh my god, potato bomb or something like that?
That's why we have a little bit of...
Better than chocolate.
No, never. Keep with the food. Now, in the high school and the middle school, do they have swipe cards to pay for their lunches? They put their code in.
Yeah.
Their code in, but not in the elementary grade?
No, I'm interested, I do.
I can write my daughter out a check in JFK, and then, you know, she'll come to me when, they'll let her know, you know, tomorrow.
Writing low?
Yeah. But at the middle school, or, I'm sorry, at the middle school, they, I would love to do that, because I have three kids, so it would be nice to write out even like a monthly check, but, because I write out three checks, so I don't usually have cash.
The only thing is, they make the food at the high school, and you have a choice, whereas the elementary school, they need to count. So, they would, we probably could do it, but they would need to count every morning how many kids are getting out.
They still have to count, even if we couldn't pay that.
They're still gonna have to count.
Exactly.
And I know that that was checked into last year, Finance Committee, you know, was brought up a couple of times, and, you know, the point of sale service was still fairly new at the secondary level, and she was still working out some glitches with, on that side that I know she was trying to work through before getting it down to the elementary level. But at the elementary level, you also have different situations where, you know, it's probably not as easy to give a first grader or second grader a number that they need to remember every day, where they're going to forget their card, or they're going to forget what the lunch was, or... So, there are just different scenarios that need to be worked through if we decide to go into that route.
Covered the three CIP issues, and actually, is the superintendent's budget, I think is a good starting point. My understanding, John, is that the numbers you put together for the superintendent's budget reflect the class sizes that we have currently at each level. Is that correct or something?
Yes, what I did is, I moved forward your kindergarten class to first grade, and moved first grade, you know, so, tried to count a little bit for retentions when I got into the cut area, and I'm assuming that the kindergarten class, I used the same number that you have now, so it's, it's there, and then I've moved everyone up. So, when I'm seeing what the eighth grade class was at JFK, I know not all of them will go to board, some will probably be retained, but I'm assuming they'll all go to ninth grade, and I just moved them up.
Now, our kindergarten classes that are coming in, I know that you went to a meeting, or they had a meeting recently about people enrolling for kindergarten.
Well, they had their, it's, they had their, the second time they did this, they've been, for years, they've been having called Enfield Gets Ready for Kindergarten, it's run through Amy Whitbro. And out of those meetings, the parents were suggesting, you know, it would really be nice, because the gist of that meeting was basically the curriculum and the routine during the day. And the parents said, "It would really be nice if we had a meeting that talked to us about immunization," which we were glad we did this year because they changed the immunization laws. So, Trish Beta, Nurse Beta came to the meeting and told them what it was. We had new forms for them, saying, "Make sure your doctor uses this form." Show them how to, you know, to go on the webpage and click the check thing with your address, it tells you what school you go to, and answer their questions as best we could about bus routes, about the milk, you know, they had a question about milk. For people who aren't there, if you have a kindergarten child, your child needs to make a decision as to whether he or she is going to have white milk or chocolate milk for the entire week. You can't mix them up. So, there's no, there's no blending of milk, you gotta have five days of chocolate or five days of white. So, there were different things like that.
What did we get for the numbers, John, of people coming in? Is it still low?
It's, right now, I don't even do it yet. I typically start doing that when they reach out to the community. They'll have, they'll have signups at the LaLonda Center, they normally go to the mall and have, and we get that. And my theory has kind of fallen apart the last year or two, because what I used failed to say was, that that was about ten percent of our enrollment. If they enrolled forty kids at the mall, it was roughly a class of four hundred. But I think what's throwing me off now is people are opting to take their children to magnet schools. So, I'm missing out a little bit on that. So, I really don't have a handle on the kindergarten size, to be honest with you, into August, that's the actual date, they have their registration, goes all the way into August, we're two of course school, and I won't be handling that, another gentleman will have that, that's a pleasure. But we typically have a number for you following, it's in May, you know, they have this, I think it's coming up June, it's first week in June, they're going to have this other night, and by that time, we have a pretty accurate handle on what we've got. Plus, they know their retention, so tell me if kids are being...
Okay, and you're, in terms of your, the numbers of kindergarten teachers that you identified?
In my, what I gave you, I just left everyone alone.
Same number.
It's the same number. But again, as I mentioned to you, I'm viewing that just like you are, it's a work in progress. So, if it came to June and we needed more or less kindergarten teachers, we would come to you and say, "Look, we need to make some changes here." And normally, what we try to do is, if we don't need the position, we don't fill it, but if we do need it, we try to find it from somewhere else within the budget that we can move it to. We don't come in to you and say, "We want to increase our FTEs by five people." The other thing that was in my budget that I gave you is I estimated eight retirements. I have seven as of today, as of yesterday, I didn't get eight today, but I have had seven and so forth. So, I feel comfortable that we'll hit the eight, and to be honest with you, I think we'll go a little bit over the eight. The thing to remember is, some of the positions that are coming in, I'm getting department chairs coming in with retirement letters, I, you won't replace some of those department chairs, I have a foreign language department chair, you won't replace that person with a bachelor first step.
Correct.
Just certification wise and experience, they won't be there.
But as an elementary teacher, you're going to get it for a couple of years.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
If someone moves up through the ranks, then maybe...
If possible. But there's some departments that no one in the department has the 105 certification, or if they do, they may not have the interest in the position, so...
Okay. And you'll, what's the date, the thirteenth?
I believe it's February thirteenth, for leap year. Leap year. The day after my birthday, if I knew it was mine in present.
You lost the chocolates again.
No, I don't want chocolates.
Well, which is just the cash.
But when I worked in Illinois, I got the day off.
It's a Sunday, take the day off.
My wife is back for Florida, I gotta pick her up.
Okay. In terms, in terms of...
I don't know, Moser.
A big issue for me was the class size, that we stayed the same. I think people were concerned that there's, we're cutting and we're going to jack up class size. Personally, I don't want to see that happen.
What I gave you, there's no cuts.
Okay. Looking at the rest of the budget, you know, we, all of us have talked about it ourselves, and whether we're comfortable with those items or whether, you know, we kicked around some items today, the sports, the intramurals, the, we talked about the technology in more peripheral terms, but is there anything that we're, want to take off the table on that budget or add to that budget? That's all, Chris has got it all up there, ready to go if you want to do that.
We're looking at the 1.48.
We're looking at the 1.48.
1.48, and it was a nine hundred and something thousand dollar increase.
And with the assumption of those two big items?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the basic assumption.
Keep bringing that up because it needs to be there. And so, this is the time to put it on the table if it's, if it's out there.
My personal, since you looked at me, Zoe, my personal goal is to have full day kindergarten. And I have asked Chris to provide the data about the additional cost for that, but she does not have it this evening, but will for our next meeting.
We also need to look at adequate space for that.
Absolutely. That was part of my, why I'm thinking there is.
Well, John, yeah, I know, I knew that you would bring that up, Joyce.
I know, you looked at me, so you expect me...
I know, because we've talked, but we don't want to stifle any conversation, Joyce. And I know that's where your interest is. But I also, I talked to John, and I don't know whether, I have not gotten a letter yet in terms of the choice stuff, but I don't know that that's going to impact that or not, because there's a conversation that's out there about whether we're going to be asked to take more kids.
No, you will, you will be asked. I was in a meeting yesterday at Cracker, and...
If you're not comfortable answering that now...
Dr. Schuman was there as well. Supposedly, on Friday, the new commissioner will send out a letter, and it's what they're asking you to meet. The quota for the state this year was sixty-five percent of the Hartford students that requested to go, actually got to go, sixty-five percent of the students got to go. So, they were like sixty-six percent, they made their quota. Their quota jumps up to eighty percent. So, what they do is, the State Department sits and says, "We're asking each system to take their share," and they keep sweetening the pot. So, for the next meeting, I can bring you, hopefully, the letter, I assume we're going to get it electronically Friday. I can even send it out to you if I get it, you know, electronically. And then, I have a sheet with some numbers that say that if you're one percent or less, if you're two percent or less, if you're three percent, there's a dollar amount that was there. It rises substantially. The full day kindergarten component, which is very popular here, when we were at the kindergarten night last Thursday, a lot of parents were interested, because we only have one full day kindergarten class right now. It's at Barnard, and it's because we received stipend for the kindergarten students, and on top of that, we get forty-one hundred dollars per student for keeping them all day. So, that's generating, that was the funds that were in here.
So, that's seven thousand we get?
If you're at three percent for next year, I believe it was six thousand a student, plus the four thousand one hundred dollars was a kindergarten full day student, so you were looking at ten-one. And there's, there's all kinds of little sweeteners in there. There's, there's things in there about school construction. I didn't ask the question, because I, I know when you're a big room like that, but I was wondering, if the school construction, there's a bonus, if the, if the ten percent of the school is, is in the project choice monies. Well, I was wondering if your district met a certain percentage, if you went to a certain percent, would they apply that money to a construction project if, in fact, the council decides to do a referendum at high school? Might not be the ten percent kids at high school, would they talk about something just in general for that? And then, there's other monies that are available, there's, they want you by March one to declare, I think all of you know, last year, they didn't do the budget in a timely fashion, and a lot of school systems did not take students, but they just didn't know the budget. They're assuring us that they, that it's going to be done much earlier this year. They need to do that for their own bus routing and things like that, where they have issues with the buses, but they said, some of their kids didn't know the bus route still weeks and weeks after school started, before they really got the, got the bus down.
They didn't get told what school they were going to until months after, in some cases.
Well, they said, and, and, you know, we talked about that, you know, from the superintendent's viewpoint too, about how late, because what you have, you have conflicting, you know, goals here. You have the chef lawyers who basically want to make sure you reach the sixty-five percent this year and the eighty percent next year. So, they're saying, "Take kids as late as February," you know, allow them to come in. And yet, from a school viewpoint, you know, to bring a child in in February and to take them out of their other school that they've been in, so there's, there's issues there. So, I, it's not a perfect system, but I think people are working towards it. But again, you do have an opportunity to raise revenue with the more students you take. There's several different things in there, depending on how many students you're willing to take and where you want to seat them. And pretty much, everyone is wanting the kids to come in, in the kindergarten first grade grades. And that's part of their dilemma, because they have kids that they want to place in the upper grades, and the school districts are not opening that many seats there. In fairness to us, I would not have, at the middle school, I would not have set any kind of seats with the twelve-year kids. We had, you know, the fifth, the sixth grade classes were a little, a little bit less than what we thought, but they averaged twenty-five to twenty-seven. And with that many kids, to say, "Yeah, let's take another five kids and put them in," is, is just too many kids.
But also typically, you got to, I mean, we've found the most success with the youngsters is when you bring them in early on and they go to the curriculum.
Yeah, they're connected to the culture, you know, and they know, they know your expectations and where you are. So, ideally, that's what everyone wants, and that's the thing that's there. So, we'll give the board all the information, and you all can digest that, and they, they're asking people to really help out with the settlement and to try to bring more students in if you have one.
Joyce.
There are towns or districts, rather, that have said they'll take this many students, and they don't receive them because there is some element of parent choice there, whether they want their child to go from this to that. And in some cases, it's because the parents know nothing about the town. And in some cases, it's because the parents know nothing about the town. The one specific one that I had learned, whenever the last Cracker meeting was, was Southern. They have been willing to accept students, but they have not had any sign there, and that is what they have determined. And from a Hartford perspective, Enfield is perceived to be a far, far distance away. I think it is on a school bus.
So those kids spend a lot of time on that bus.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a long, long day for those kids, and the kids have been fine, the busing has been problematic for all the time that I was.
Well, what they've done, they divided Hartford up into four zones, they've kind of crossed it, and they've got the four zones. And ideally, they wanna have the Hartford zones feed certain suburbs, so that they're not dragging all the way from the south side, all the way through the city to go out. And yet, they, they'll make exceptions. If you don't get placed in that, the zone that you, you want to, they'll let you go to the next zone. But they have the economic reality too. I mean, the former acting commissioner, George Coleman, was, was very direct about that. The cost of transportation is exorbitant, and to take a school bus for one child and say, "We'll drive you to the school that you want," they just can't afford it either. It's a 40-something thousand dollar bus ride. And he's saying that, you know, we just, we just can't sustain those kind of costs, so.
Well, the reason I ask you to bring it up now, is that we're in that discussion about all-day kindergarten, and, you know, and I agree with Joyce, I think that's where we need to go. I'm convinced that's where the state's gonna take us at some point. I don't know, I don't know when that's going to be.
Well, like, if you want, if you want, I could take the current numbers of what we have, and say, if, you know, that, that, these rooms are available, because that's part of what you're looking at with all-day kindergarten, you need to find the space. So, so if we, we could take a look and just say, we have four schools, we have it at one. If Cracker was willing to drive to all four schools, because don't forget.
That's right.
Hale was, when there was, when we, when we had the nine elementary schools, only certain elementary schools were receiving students from Hartford, because Cracker didn't want to drive all the way through Enfield once they got off. They wanna get as close as they can to the interstate to come in, because of the length of time of students. And it's a long day for little vets. I mean, you get a little five-year-old kid, and drive up from Hartford, and be here all day and have to drive home, it's a long day.
That's very long.
I have a question. Does it make more sense to only start, if we did do the full-day kindergarten, and we couldn't do it at every school, to only do it at one school? Because you, let's say, have four kindergarten classes, but two go full-day and two go half-day. And they get to first grade, they're not at the same level. Like, it doesn't make any sense. The two, the two classes that have gone full-day are gonna be better off than the two half-days. I mean, it's proven fact.
Well, the philosophy that we have is, we don't do acceleration with a full-day class. We're doing the same curriculum we do with the half-day class. It's just that they have more time to spend on the curriculum. So, it's slowing things down, and they're, they're able to do that, and they're not, it's not like you're in the full-day class, you're gonna be reading a particular book that the other group is not at. It's just, it's not, it's not an accelerated model where the full-day covers more work.
But the result could be just what.
Well, absolutely, you would hope the result would be stronger, because they've had more time to be there. You know, they've had more time to work on their skills, and.
Have we done any research? Because Henry Barnes has, has had it for so long.
Yeah.
I mean, can there, can you definitely see a difference?
Again, you're coming back to that data collection person, they're gonna say, "Here's the hard data."
Well, I can't.
I can have, I can have you talk to first-grade teachers that are gonna tell you they see a difference, that they can tell kids. Just like we have kindergarten teachers that say, "I can see a difference with people that have been in a certified preschool environment when they come in, that their.
Absolutely.
Their, their skill set is different, their ability to interact with other kids, their behavior is, is different." So it's, it's obvious.
Well, when we had the partial full-day kindergarten, you were over that program, and we offered, I think, at four different schools, right, John? And we did this by the lottery, and, and everybody was just.
We were up, we were up to eight classes at one time for that, without Cracker, we were up to eight.
We're fine.
I just wonder whether, yeah, and it's a discussion issue, we, I think we're headed towards all-day kindergarten, it's something that we've built schools for, all-day kindergarten, and something that I think you're correct, that the data, I think, would reinforce it. Is this an opportunity to try it in one, or, or another school, another class, or another two classes or something? Is it worth our while to look at it? First question John brought up, space, do we have the space? Maybe bring it up to the principals and talk to them about it, and, and see what we would have to do. Would we have to buy more equipment? I don't know. I mean, those are good questions to look at.
Well, if you're phased in, you would have, if you're still available maybe in three years, and you're phased in, yeah, look at some other alternatives as well. John and I were at, yesterday, we were at the Family Resource Center, and we talked to one of the state legislators there, and almost virtually guaranteed, if it's not this year, it's gonna be next year.
Mandate?
Yes, a mandate.
And they'll, they'll give you a timeframe, I think. They're not gonna do it all in one year, because nobody's gonna be able to afford that, I don't think, but, do you think? I'm looking at your face, trying to think that.
I was not talking my view.
Are they gonna pay for it? Is this gonna be a funded mandate?
Yes.
That was gonna be it.
I don't believe it either, too. If a kid's food, wouldn't recognize.
No, I don't, I don't think so either. But if, John, if you can get us some information on that, what percentage of kids do we have now, from, from Choice?
Right now, we have 62 students, I think, 63 stu-, we, we typically were running like 75 or so, and then with consolidation, we, we kinda leaned back a little, we haven't taken, normally, we take a few older kids, we stayed away from that, so, I wanted to say, I thought we were 62 or 64 this year. We'll double-check the numbers.
And at 3%, that would be 169.
Well, there's, there's a 1%, a 2%, a 3%.
That's what I. That's what I. That's what I. That's what I.
That's what I can't.
Yes, the, the additional pay, yes.
Okay.
Up to 3,000 per student.
I'm looking at the time, it's quarter to nine, we've been at about two and a quarter hours. Do you want to keep this going now? We have a meeting scheduled for the 7th, and we, we could continue it at that point, if you want to. I'm just asking the role of the board here.
We've already just slept around for a while. It's still, not till we combine the high schools. Well, that's one of the, since I've put full-day kindergarten out, we can. That's right, since Joyce has put full-day kindergarten out, which is really a, we might as well put Latin back on the table.
People put this stuff out, can I put out some of my other stuff?
Oh.
No? Okay.
Not getting that birthday present, we don't care.
I'd like to get a special ed director, I'd like to get the second director back for curriculum.
Oh, absolutely.
Those are issues, those are.
But my concern with Latin would be, one, you'd be starting probably with Latin 1, obviously, because we haven't had anyone in it. And it's, and it's so hard to find a teacher in the first place, and I don't see how you could have a full-time teacher by offering just Latin 1, so you're back to a point,